July 11th. At this time, shall we stand for invocation and pledge of allegiance? Led by Supervisor Allen.
All right. Good to see all y'all. Let us pray. Dear Lord, thank you for each and every one that's here tonight. Pray you watch over all of us and let us do and say whatever you want us to do, dear Lord. Help us to just both will work with the county and do good things. And Lord, I think a little fellow, six years old, passed away yesterday in the lake, and I pray that you'll be with his family, parents and grandparents and all his friends for sorry for their loss. In Jesus' name I pray, amen.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag.
Let us pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which we stand. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We do have a call, and we got five out of seven. First on our agenda is the approval of minutes of the agenda for the night.
So move. Second.
Motion to second approve our work agenda for the night. Question, all in favor?
It did, okay. We're good.
Okay. The approval of minutes. Motion by Supervisor Bryant, second by Supervisor Matthews. Do we approve our minutes? Are there any questions? All in favor? Next would be the approval of claims.
So move, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
Motion by Supervisor Matthews, second by Supervisor Allen. Do we approve our claims? All in favor?
Waiting on a move, motion, yeah?
Got a motion to second, didn't ya?
So approved, I mean approved.
He's second.
Yeah, but it's not on the computer. There you go. Now we got you.
All in favor? Then announcements. And so we moved our agenda up on this, moved our items up on the agenda to presentations. And we got, um, three present, three, uh, three presentat, uh, four, really. We asked the, um, family of Ms. Linda Babel Anderson to come first. We have anybody here from Ms. Anderson? Ms. Linda Babel Anderson? Do we have anybody here from, um, from Mrs. Bonnie Lou LaSueur Wood? What did people contact?
Jordan told me he contacted them.
Okay. All right. Uh, the next on our agenda is a resolution, uh, resolution of Mr. Charles White. Ask his family to come forward, please. Resolution appreciation, appreciation of Mr. Charles White. Whereas Mr. Charles A. White was born on May the 12th, 1930, in Huntington, West Virginia, and spent formative years in Clifton Forge, Virginia. After graduating from Jefferson High School in 1951, Mr. White accepted an epidemic scholarship at St. Paul's College in Lawrenceville, Virginia. While attending St. Paul, he joined the Alpha, um, Alpha fraternity, played football for three years, graduated fourth in the class of 1955 with a bachelor of science degree in industri- industrial education specializing in building trade. Whereas Mr. White began his teaching career in Buckingham County in the fall of 1955 by accepting a position to teach, teaching building trade at Carter J. Winston High School. His teaching career in central Virginia lasted 34 years, 1955 through 1989, taking him from Buckingham County to Flavanna and to Prince Edward County Schools. As a classroom teacher, Mr. White instilled in his students a sense of responsibility, integrity, and humanity. Whereas Mr. White was an acting member of the civic organizations, included by not limited to serving as a former member and president of the Buckingham Afro-America Life and History Society. Whereas, um, a Degan Sunday School teacher at Jerusalem Baptist Church, a member of the Volters League, past vice president of the Buckingham Branch National Association for the Advancement of Colored People, and the member of the Buckingham Chamber of Commerce as one of the founding scout leaders of the first Afro-America, American troops or boy scouts of America in 1950 in Buckingham County. His leadership, he won district, state, and national scouting recognition as a mentor, club scout, boy scouts, equal scout, explorer scouts, and equal scouts. Whereas Mr. White's unquenchable thirst for knowledge led him to publishing The Hidden and Forgotten, contribution to Buckingham Black, uh, Blacks to American History in 85, 1985, and revised and expanded education in 2017 and in 1987. He began publishing informant, a monthly newspaper with the circulation through of the county. In 2005, Mr. White called the book Buckingham County in the Black America, in the Black Americans service of the books. His efforts towards the preservation of the unique history railroad building led him to a grant from the Virginia Historical Society to establish the learning by gain, a living enhancement ensemble that traveled throughout the county, telling the railroad workers stories demonstrated in worksongs. Whereas, um, whereas your family foundation in Buckingham County began when you met the prettiest woman in Buckingham. Would you give a kiss for Mr. White? Kiss her right now for us. Amen. Amen. We thank you for establishing the roots here with your children, Charles Junior, Cheryl, Craig, and Christie. Therefore, be resolved that the members of the Buckingham Board of Supervisors do hereby recognize and express their deepest appreciation to Mr. Charles White for his 67 years of dedication to education of the people of Buckingham County and to the service to the communities of this county. May you continue to aspire and forever seek an answer that was hidden and forgotten. Give me a great pledge. Let me ask this question real quick. How many here was in Mr. White's class? Amen. I was there in 65, amen. Amen. We thank God for him. Amen. And his beautiful wife has still been with him these many years. May God bless both of you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, thank you. This is a complete surprise. Only thing I can say is to him whom much is given, much is expected.
Thank the children. Daughters and fine, good-looking sons and son-in-laws and everybody, amen. Got the whole bunch, got everybody, amen. Thank y'all. I'm sorry. I gotta go. I think I wanna get y'all a picture, bro.
You surprised back there for me?
No, man. Yes, ma'am. Joe Chamberlain, both Chambers dead. Okay. Joe Chamberlain, alright, that's right. That'll be right, that'll be right.
I appreciate it.
Why don't you go to camera that work, you gonna take a picture? Okay, alright. Thank you, Joe. Again, we wanna thank you, and at this time, we wanna recognize our baseball team. We got some great young men that done good in, thank you, sweetheart, done good in baseball. Ask the baseball team to come. Amen.
Hold on, don't go anywhere. We're gonna, um, actually acknowledge each of you by your name to give you, um, the credit due for a hard-earned season, and all I can say is go Buckingham Knights, because long ago, I was one of y'all too. Just not on the baseball team. So, um, sometimes when you're out there playing sports and working hard and sweating, you forget that other people here in your hometown are watching you. So, um, it was a big deal because, um, no matter how many years it's been, or whether you're trying to get to the high school, the Knights spirit and the green and gold runs pretty deep, guys. So, um, the first person that we'd like to represent or recognize tonight is Brayden Schaefer. Is he with us? That's okay, Brayden? We'll save your certificate. Nicholas Allen. Avery Schaefer. George Hurt. Ethan Walter. We're gonna get one soon. Yes, we will. Jacob Carter. Rocco Rayner. John Mitchell. Jonathan Gowens. Justin Gunner. Eli Bryant. Cameron Newton. Camden Allen. Holden Tyson. Daniel Farish. It looks like that actually takes care of our players. We do have some recognition for the coaching staff that helped get this team, um, a successful season, and that's Coach John Tony. Coach Tim Hoag. Coach Mike Jones. I'm gonna run some labs. And Coach Trey Lawson is with us.
Y'all come forward with Mr. Gomis, and all y'all let him get a picture, all y'all together.
Is there any parents, family members?
All the parents or family members with the team, would you come forward, please? Let him get a picture. Amen. Yeah, one of all y'all had a part in this. Good to see you.
How you doing?
Amen. God bless you, young man. God bless you. Good to see you, my man. Jaws. Where did Jaws go? Well, you got a picture there? Hey, my man.
I guess she's staying with you, Ken, right? Uh, 'cause we gonna be seen.
How you doing, Miss Allen? Found these boys.
Oh, goodness, Lord. I was ready for call. I'm doing several. Which one comes out best? I'll be thank you so much.
Yes, sir.
Okay, so now we have.
Back to the public comments.
We move back to public comments. Anybody sign up for public comments? We got three minutes. And the one that's speaking for a group got five minutes. That's right?
They did away with that.
Did away with it, I'm sorry. Anybody got three minutes? No, let's stick to the rule three. Three minutes. Call the first one, my Ms. Allen.
We have 24 signed up. The first one is Chinsek, Chinsek Henshaw.
Mr. Henshaw present? We want the next one. Come on, come on. Good evening, ma'am.
Um, my name is Chinsek Henshaw. My husband and.
Can you pull the mic to you a little bit?
Yes, ma'am.
Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Okay, my husband Mike and I, I own the land in District Four.
District Four, yes, ma'am.
This is gonna be my third. Uh, I guess it's voicing my opinion and different, uh, items through the county. I hope you guys will really listen. And, um, what I'm trying to say is, please vote yes to begin developing an industrial gold mining ordinance. Uh, I hope that you agree that industrial gold mining would be devastating for our county. We have the right and responsibility to protect ourself and our water, air, and land from toxic trespass of metallic mining. Please start the process of taking a good look at, uh, strong ordinance that would protect us, especially for our future county members. Please consider, thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Raglin, District Five.
Members of the board and Mr. Carter, thank you for this opportunity to speak this evening. My name is Sherry Raglin, and I live in District Five, and Harry Bryant is my representative. I'm here tonight to ask that you support a mining ordinance. We all have a responsibility to protect our natural resources, and this board can start that process by getting an ordinance in place now. The watershed or the land area where they are mining has been conducted in the fifth district, well, the water flows directly and indirectly to the James River, affecting not only our drinking water, but the aquifers, and they all go to the James River, and they pop, with the population downstream. I am concerned for the health and welfare of my children's children. What are we trying to accomplish allowing outside companies to come in, strip our land without any accountability? When forests are harvested, we ask that landowners and companies be responsible for planting trees back. How can we replenish water that is not replenishable? Children are taught to protect their natural resources. We, as adults, need to protect these natural resources by putting into place practices and standards now and for the future, not only for the people of the fifth district, but for all that live in potential mining areas in Buckingham County. Our governing powers have the capability to do things right now and not worrying about the repercussions down the road. Let this be the starting point to think ahead as to how this will affect our community within the next 30 to 50 years down the road and work on adopting a mining ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
John Laurie, District Six.
Hello.
Good afternoon, Mr. Laurie.
My name is John W. Laurie. I live in the Slaver River District. We don't want go, industrial gold mining in Buckingham County. We have the power to stop it right here in Buckingham with a strong ordinance. I ask you to give permission to the county administrator and attorney to move forward with looking into the proposed ordinance that would protect us in Buckingham from the toxic trespass of industrial metallic mining. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Jiva Abate, District Five.
Thank you. Supervisors, good to see you all. Court folks and everyone. I'm Jiva Abate from District Five. Harry Bryant is our supervisor, and I'm here to speak about the gold mining issue. I've had a meeting with Harry and some of our community members, and we're working together with the supervisors to do what we can to craft a good ordinance that represents the idea of protecting our water and our land and our livestock. So, I've done research since I heard about this, and I have yet to find a clean gold mine. The common practice is for, this company, Aston Bay, from Canada, to make a big ballyhoo about this, get investors to buy in, sell the whole thing off to a gold mining company who then will mine it. Then, when there's a mess left of ore and toxic material, they go bankrupt. And guess who has to pay for the cleanup and the water that people can't drink? It's the county and everybody else. So, I'm probably preaching to the choir, 'cause I know some of you have looked into this, but I urge you to move the ordinance forward, to find the right text and the right words to make this work for all of us, because I know you're all interested in this too. So, thank you very much. Let's move the ordinance forward. And Harry, thank you for coming over and sitting down with us and reviewing this. Appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Any more, District Five?
Board of Supervisors, I too, I'm the executive director out in Yogaville. Uh, we too are for moving the proposal of the, uh, gold mining ordinance forward. I've, uh, have serious concerns about our water, uh, and all the other things that Sherry said. Sherry Raglin, uh, really laid it out for me, uh, and the rest, and many of the others that you'll hear tonight. So, uh, thank you, Harry, for helping us, uh, understand the process, and, uh, let's move this, uh, ordinance forward. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
David Ball, District Three.
Yes, if anyone else, this is Harvey Shelton. Could I speak now? I signed up.
Uh, when I call your name?
Okay.
Yes, sir.
Good evening. David Ball, District Three.
Good evening, sir.
How are you, gentlemen, this evening? First off, I would like to welcome and invite all of you to come down to Curtsville on August 1st. We have our general meeting, we'll have a program, and then to say that we're gonna have a special program on August 6th for the kids, Saturday afternoon from 11:00 to 4:00. So, we're gonna have a lot of learning events. Scouts will be helping, and it's gonna be a really good opportunity for kids to come, families to come. There'll be food, activities, things for them to do. So, that's gonna be a nice time event. Now, to go to a couple other things. I hear a lot about the gold mining, and I know that until there's actually some activity from the gold mine, it's not gonna happen. Uh, there's a lot of drilling and exploring that they legally can get past doing, but until they actually have completed that and they've decided whether or not they're going to proceed forward and present a comprehensive plan, and I do agree, the county should have some sort of ordinance, not against recreational panners and stuff like that, but against massive mining activities that'll disrupt the whole nature of this county to an adverse way. Also, I think, um, aside from the gold panning, uh, another issue that really needs to come up before the county that they need to get serious about, and that's the fact that, um, in the, uh, CDC, which is a developed group of counties that meet, and Buckingham is one of that group, they do not have a solar policy. I believe Buckingham is the only county in that group of 10 that do not have a solar policy, and without a solar policy, it's an open door for companies to come in and put up solar fields. And on the worst part of it is, when these solar fields pan out, there's nothing about the disposition. If a company that put it up, that's running or owns it, folds up on that, it's the same thing as the gold mine. So, you're gonna have a problem with solar panels that are environmentally a problem. If there's no proper way for removal and disposal of these from the environment, they will continue to deteriorate and contaminate the environment. So, that's another consideration that I think is paramount for the board to enact, and perhaps maybe at this point, if you can even do it, put a moratorium until you have a policy in place. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
David Waters, District Five.
Thank you, sir.
Good evening. I'm gonna sound much like, uh, the other commenters before me. My name is David Waters, and I live in District Five. Uh, on tonight's agenda, you will be asked by Administrator Carter to consider possibly developing a gold mining ordinance. Uh, Mr. Bryant is, is my representative in District Five, and I thank him very much for bringing this to the board. Uh, please vote yes to begin this process. This will allow the county administrator and attorney to take a good look at the proposed Community Bill of Rights, which presents strong, common sense protections from the toxic trespass that we know would come with industrial metallic mining. I'm speaking for myself and over 800 people represented on petitions from across the county that, that have been, uh, spread around by the Virginia Community Rights Network and the Friends of Buckingham, who are partnered on this important. the Friends of Buckingham, who are partnered on this important project. Perhaps you think that if industrial scale gold mining does happen here, it won't be for a couple of years. I will ask that you still start this conversation so that we are prepared for that possibility. I hope that you agree that industrial gold mining would be devastating for our county. As we talked to people about across Buckingham while collecting signatures, we found that most were not aware of the seventy-some abandoned gold mines in Buckingham from the eighteen hundreds that are full of mercury. If we can't get those cleaned up, why would we invite more industrial poisoning? The local Buckingham Special Use Permit would be the first hoop of many the applying industry would need to navigate. We know we have the power to stop it right there. We want to get out ahead of possible industrial gold mining or other metallic mining companies by having a strong protective ordinance in place. The proposed ordinance we are bringing to the table was modeled after existing law adopted unanimously by the Town Council of Halifax in two thousand and eight to protect them against possible uranium mining upstream in Pennsylvania County. We have now provided all the supervisors with a copy of both the ordinance proposed for Buckingham and Halifax's ordinance. We would be delighted to discuss this with you and why we feel this would be the best protection possible. As the state study is showing us, the laws in place do not protect us. We think you two will be inspired by the strong innovative approach. There are over two hundred communities across America that have adopted a Community Bill of Rights. In addition to Halifax, for example, the Pittsburgh City Council passed one to stop fracked gas within fracked gas wells from drilling within the city limits. We too can do this. Thank you for voting yes to move this conversation forward tonight, and thank you for protecting us.
Thank you. Thank you, sir.
Good evening. My name is Heidi Divya Berto, and I live in District Five. And thank you very much, Mr. Bryant, for bringing this forward, the issue of the gold mining ordinance. So I ask you to please vote yes to begin developing an industrial gold mining ordinance. Industrial mining could bankrupt our county. Thank you for starting the process of taking a good look at what a strong ordinance could do to protect us. Right now Aston Bay, the Canadian metallic mining company, mining exploratory company sees Buckingham County in particular and Virginia in general as an open highway of opportunity because we have no laws to protect us nor deter them. The study being done by the state has confirmed that. The county has the power to issue or deny the first special use permit in a long list of required permits. Without that first permit, they can go no further. A group of us has created an ordinance that would be a strong protective measure to prevent a company from getting a permit, and of course, that's our goal. Would you agree that people have a right not to be poisoned? Personal property and corporate property can't be trespassed on. So we assert that a person's body, farm, and wild animals' bodies, or any ecosystem should have the same rights and must not be trespassed on with poisons. So we know that we have the right and responsibility, you keep hearing that, and I think it's just a really good thing to remember, that we have the right and responsibility to make decisions locally to protect our communities. The right and responsibility to protect ourselves and our water, air, land, from the toxic trespass of industrial metallic mining. Our national and state constitutions provide bedrock support for these rights. We are taking responsibility by asserting those rights. The ordinance we are proposing requires a metallic mining to prove it first, before getting a permit, before getting a permit, the company would first have to provide proof that at least one metallic mine did not cause harm. This simple but brilliant common sense idea is inspired by past state law in Wisconsin and pending law in Minnesota. We think you will like what you see. Please say yes to begin exploring possibilities that would strongly protect what we love, our home. Thank you very much for listening.
Good evening.
Good evening, sir.
My name is Nelson Bailey. I live in the 5th District, and this is my neighbor, captain of Buckingham ship, Mr. Carter. I thank him. He's had a true course and a steady course. It's nice to have him appointed. I would like to say, recently, the country of Nigeria had the biggest gold discovery in the entire, entire world. It beats everything, Buckingham, California, Australia, there's no need. If you don't believe it, I will send you the article from the Commodity Times. The discovery, we don't need it. We have four hundred and fifteen years, fourteen years of gold reserve. Why do we need to dig a hole and pollute the ground and our water for more gold? Can't eat gold. Can't drink polluted water. What's the matter with the folks, huh? Nobody understand that? And it's like, why are we letting, excuse me, letting solar farms come in with no pond permits or settlement pond permits? Nobody knows anything about that. The first solar farm went through here like hot knife through butter, and nobody heard of a sediment pond. Nobody. We didn't. Maybe you did, you know, but you didn't tell us what happened here. We didn't get the memo. Y'all did. So it's like, let's pay attention and let's tighten up. Put two round turns and a half hitch on it.
Well, just take a breath after that. My name is Mindy Zlatnik, and I live in District Five. I want to ask you to move forward on consideration of developing a gold mining ordinance. I'm quoting some thoughts from another community member that I think are relevant to this evening's discussion. We were in conversation, and she said, you might think it's unnecessary since no new gold mines have been proposed in Buckingham County. I hope, though, that you'll consider the ordinance as a first step in preparing for industrial gold mining that could be proposed in the future. I know some of you think industrial gold mining will never happen here, and if that's the case, then I ask you to consider implementing the ordinance anyway, because if that's the case, there's no harm in having an ordinance. I know some of you think that if industrial gold mining does happen here, it won't for a number of years. If that's the case, I still ask you to consider implementing the ordinance now so that we're prepared for that eventuality. And as you consider the ordinance, please also consider the great number of Buckingham residents who already support a rights-based ordinance that has been written by a group of local residents. I'm one of over eight hundred people in the county who has signed the petition in support of the ordinance to protect us from toxic trespass. We appreciate the work you do for the county, and we're counting on you.
Welcome. Thank you, ma'am.
Members of the board, it's Donald Brett Gormas. Everybody, all y'all know me as Brett, District Seven, under Danny Allen. First, I wanted to express to the community the thanks that we had for the show out for the search and rescue for Walde yesterday. I'd never seen in fifteen years fire and rescue together, so I just wanted to thank everybody that was involved in that. A little strong. I just wanted to comment on the proposed housing development that was brought up. I know I'm late to it. A lot of the talk was last month, but I wasn't able to be here because of work. I wanted to thank you for the efforts that you have taken to get us to this point. I'm a lifelong resident of Buckingham. I have a family of my own that's starting this year. I want to see this community grow and not stay stale and stagnant like it is now. Having businesses come in, quality businesses that will stay, we've had businesses that come, most of them have left because there's no supporting base for public to come there and shop. It seems to be like nice houses and decent land, and as far as that, but I am a big proponent for public safety. Most of y'all know I've been in fire EMS for over fifteen years now. The tax base that this would bring in is will support our emergency services that you know we've taken over and is rapidly growing. I like to see money used for emergency services, the fire department, and infrastructure as far as like the youth league, you know, have something for our citizens to actually do something, increase our educational base. But I would see that tax revenue be used for that and better our community. But I just wanted to thank you all for your efforts that you've made to get us this far and hope we continue going in the future. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Gormas.
Thank you, board members. I'm in support of a mining ordinance. I've been in Buckingham County since nineteen seventy-nine and a landowner in 5th District. I just want to put a little historical perspective of how important water is here in Buckingham. In the Civil War, you said the James River on one side, the Slate River, the Appomattox River, it kept the conflict out of this county largely. And it's very much a rural place. I grew up in Boise, Idaho, and just some ways north of us was a town called Leadville. Had a lead mine and a lead smelter. And it took three generations of birth defects before they woke up to the fact that those metal mining operations were polluting the air and water. We don't want to wind up in that situation. These multinational companies, they have no investment in our homes here, in our families, in our future. They're only after that dollar. So let's put the regulations in place so that we're the ones in control. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, thank you. Good evening. My name is Diane Gilliland. I don't know where she came up with that at, but in District Four. First off, I'd like to say how sorry I am and my condolences to Landon's family. There's been a devastating tragedy in our community last night and this morning that will impact this family for the rest of their lives, and I am so sorry. My thoughts and prayers are with them. Our beautiful county has been rocked by this. Life will never be the same for this family, just like if the housing development goes up, our beautiful county will never be the same. It will drown and never be the same great county that we all love. As a kid, I watched Campbell County go from a two-stop light county to an adult to a ten-stop light county and counting, all because of a big lots came in, a big lots. And the families and the community disappear, the farming community disappear, just like what will happen here. This is a place stories are made of. This is a place where we do have a community of people that will show up in time of need for their neighbors, and if they start, and if you start choking it out with all the gold mining, solar enclosures, I can't call it a farm because it kills everything around it. The housing development, our beautiful rural farming community will be lost forever and ever, and it will, it will only be y'all's fault. I also had a comment on my Facebook page from Mr. Matthews' wife the other day saying that she would love to live in a subdivision like this. My question would be, want to sell your farm and your land and build it there? That way it's closer to Farmville. And if the homes don't sell and the government puts illegals in there, then that can be y'all's problems, not Buckingham's. Sometimes growth is not a good thing. It will choke the life out of this beautiful farming community like you've never seen. So please, stop trying to kill our farming community that we love. Being a small community means people helping people. They come together like family. If you add this housing project, housing project and lots more people to the community, the small town comes together and time of need will stop. The small town pouring out love will stop, and there will not be a community of love any longer. And once this is gone, you can't get it back, just like Landon's family. No more hugs, no more kisses, no more laughter.
Thank you for your comments, ma'am.
No more joy.
Thank you for your comments. Your turn, ma'am.
Harvey Shelton, District Five.
Members of the board of supervisors and Mrs. Carter, I am Harvey Shelton. I live in District Five. Harry is my supervisor. I'm very concerned about industrialized gold mining. I'm here to request that you will vote yes to begin developing an industrial gold mining ordinance for the county. I believe that gold mining would be very harmful. A strong ordinance would protect our health, water, air, and land. Your cooperation is much appreciated. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Board of Supervisors, I'm Alan Benstock in District Five. Thank you for this opportunity to speak to you all. I, I'm recent to the county. I'm new. I've been here a couple of years, two and a half years, and I've watched carefully, my background is urban planner, campus planner for NASA for twenty-two years up at Goddard Space Flight Center, and I supported my local community in Maryland while I was there, and I saw there a microcosm of what you face here as well. There's an opportunity here at every turn to weigh increased taxes, tax income. We need that. I recognize it, too. I see it. And I know that the challenge is always going to be the pressure upon you to make the tough calls. There's always going to be another proposal. There's always going to be another proposal. I do want to say regarding any kind of industrial or metallic mining in our county, that's a tough one, and it's one that I support, that you go forward with the ordinance. It's not the place for us to be because it's too endemic. It's not something that's localized like the Pizza Hut. It's going to affect all of us. And if you look at water table maps, nobody's safe. What's that expression, NIMBY? Not in my backyard? Well, it's in all of our backyards. So I plead that you support the ordinance and save our quality of life. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Good evening. Tonight, I address the, I'm addressing Buckingham County's Emergency Medical Services response to a medical emergency at Fork Union Baptist Church at 5932 Dixie Hill Road. The date was Saturday, 25th of June, 2022. A medical emergency occurred at this church at approximately 2:28 PM, and an ambulance was requested through the 911 system. There was no miscommunication on the part of the caller with regards to the location of the emergency or the immediate need for an ambulance, as the caller was a deacon of the church, and his daughter actually was a physician that was overseeing the medical emergency. I was present when the emergency occurred and knew that EMS had been requested. I knew the locations of the two units that might respond. Dillon is about five miles away, and Glenmore is about 11.8 miles away. And yes, I drove the distance to be sure. After socializing with a few people, I was ready to leave the church. However, I realized that the ambulance had not arrived, nor did I hear any emergency vehicle en route. At approximately 2:48 PM, I called the Buckingham County Sheriff's Office to request the estimated time of arrival of the ambulance. I was informed that no ambulance was en route, that there are already two units out, so none were available in Buckingham County, that they had reached out to Appomattox and Cumberland to see if they could respond, and they were waiting on a response from these two counties. My response was that we should take the person to the emergency room rather than just waiting on them to locate an EMS unit. I was surprised when the person I was speaking to requested that I let her know if we no longer needed the ambulance. I informed the doctor that no ambulance was en route and that I had a large vehicle and could transport someone if they needed to lie down. By 3:06 PM, I was en route to Centerra South Side Community Hospital Emergency Room. 3:06 was the time I notified the sheriff's office that I was taking a patient to the emergency room. By 5:30 PM, I was notified by the patient's family member that the patient had been lifelighted to Lynchburg General for stroke evaluation and care. Simply put, why weren't we notified that no ambulance was available? We lost at least 38 valuable minutes waiting for something that was not available. And if Dillon has four units, why did the county max out at two being deployed? Just questions. And I did give a copy of this to Cody this afternoon, I mean, this evening, and he did correct me. He said they only had two units available that day.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Evening, gentlemen.
Good afternoon, ma'am.
I'm here to speak about the residential development plan. Did you all get my email? It was posted?
Yes, ma'am, we got it. Thank you.
All right. I did ask Nikki to send it to you because I know you don't have an email, so I made sure I took care of you. Good luck. I like the yellow on you, by the way.
Well, thank you, ma'am.
I was told to do my homework, which I did do. Every number I got, but for two, came from you people, came from your board meetings, came from your videos. The only two numbers that did not come from you was the 1.9, that was for the amount of students, but that came from the federal government. And I gave you the benefit of the doubt with the $30,000 income so that you could get more revenue. But if people don't understand what I'm talking about, after the informational meeting of April 11th in 2022 concerning the proposal for residential development of the county industrial park site off of Wendingo Road, I ran the numbers of revenue and liability for the county school obligation, just the county school obligation. The figures confirmed that the proposal is not in the best interest of the citizen taxpayers of this county, and it will require other property to subsidize it unless a special tax is added to the property above the standard tax rate, as has been done with other developments. Proffers, have you looked at any profers? Have you looked at Prince William's profers? Have you looked at Henrico's? Have you looked at Stanford? Have we got profers for Mr. Lloyd that will every year be collected from him to cover the deficits? I think not. Current national average, 1.9 school-age children per household at 150 households adds 285 students to the county school system yearly. With a county contribution of $3,000 per student, your budget, not mine, makes a liability of $855,000 per year, every year. There was a meeting with Mr. Donovan, asked Mr. Lloyd, the developer, what the development's potential tax revenue would be for this county. Mr. Lloyd responded at build-out, it would be $156,000. That brings us to a deficit of $672,750 a year. This is not tax-neutral to the people of Buckingham County. You want to put a gold mine in? How many people are going to come? Let's look at the gas prices. How many people from Richmond and Charlottesville want to come to a sleepy little town? All right? Well, we don't want it to be sleepy anymore. We want to have bars and restaurants, and we want to have theaters, and we're going to change our county because we want to bring these people in. So here's a scenario. Mr. Lloyd buys it. He strips the property of its $350,000 of my wood, your wood. He's going to take the profit from it. He's going to default. He's going to bring in a bunch of contractors to commit a default.
Your time up, ma'am. Thank you. Thank you.
We'll have six today, housing, and we will have even more. Ken Nadle, District Five.
I'll be in favor of everybody. Hello, board members. I'm Ken Nadle from District Five. I just wanted to...
I didn't get your name. Say it. Will you state your name again, please?
Ken Nadle, N-A-D-L-E.
Okay, thank you.
I just wanted to lend my voice, along with my neighbors who spoke so well about the gold mine, and to ask that, to say yes, please consider a proposal to investigate the gold mine. And that's it. I'll make it very short.
Thank you, sir.
All right, thank you.
Hi, Marie Flowers, District Three. First of all, I want to support Mr. Ball in his suggestion very strongly that y'all develop regulations for the solar. Okay, I signed the petition along with many citizens in District Three in support of the proposed ordinance that would protect us from industrial metallic mining. And many of those 800 signers are from District Three. Allow this effort to move forward with the county administrator and attorney. And one of the important words in my little speech here is "us," all of us. We're all in this together. And it's my belief that you all are responsible. Your first responsibility is to protect the welfare of people, all of us. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Good evening, gentlemen.
Good evening, sir.
My name is Maynard Ritchie. I live up in District Six on Golf Town Road. Basically, I'm hearing a lot about county growth, tax revenues and all that, and I understand that. I mean, I understand you're never going to stop growth. Forty years ago, I grew up, I grew up in a toxic waste dump, literally in Illinois. We had a steel mill and a coal plant to operate the steel mill. We had water that we couldn't drink. All water came out the Mississippi River, as a matter of fact. We had air that we couldn't breathe that looked like fog. So I know what the industrial mining and all can do to... That steel mill came along a long time before I did. And people died young from cancers and things like that. Forty years ago, I lived in Stafford County, when Stafford County had 35,000 people in it. And I listened to the same arguments going on about growth, that if we allow these homes and things in, you know, it's going to help the tax base, and folks' taxes are not going to go up, and we need it for revenue. And I understand revenue. And I understand life ain't cheap, but I'm going to tell you something, those taxes, by 1990, from 1982 to 1990, Stafford County had tripled. And now I think there's almost a million people in Stafford. They got houses on top of houses, and they didn't keep up with the infrastructure. And like I said, you can't stop growth. And everybody wants to come to, I've lived here for 30 years, 30 years. And I've always kind of liked it here. It's always kind of quiet. But it's, everybody wants to come to a quiet community, and I get it. They did the same thing coming out of DC and Maryland, Northern Virginia, Stafford. Only thing that I would ask, and I'm not going to stand up here and insult anybody's common sense or intelligence, is as we move forward as a community, let's just perceive with caution and take things as they come and not overload ourselves with mines or solar farms or thousand-unit housing developments. Let's think about what we're doing for the future that's coming along behind us. That's all I got, y'all.
Thank you, sir.
Good evening, everyone. I'm here to support the ordinance against the gold mining for all the reasons that all the incredible people gave before me. So please, put that together and protect all of us and the nature and the land and the water. Do the right thing. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Good evening. I'm Kendah Honeman from District Five. Everything's been said. There's nothing more I have to say other than please let Administrator Carter and Attorney Wright go forward and look at this ordinance against the gold mining. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Good evening. Thank you for waiting for me. I sent emails to all of you, including you, Mr. Chambers through Carl, but I understood it wasn't going to go on the record, so that's why I showed up tonight last minute. So I'm not going to go into why you should not have a gold mine. What I will say, you've heard a lot of that tonight, so I would say ditto, ditto, ditto to everything that's been said, really. What I will say is this ordinance is important because it will protect us from things such as industrial gold mines and give some power to a locality to say no and to protect the people here. And it's my understanding that Mr. Wright represents you, but that you represent us. So I'm asking you to seriously look into this ordinance, to instruct Mr. Wright and your administrator to look into it and then vote yes. And then we can have a public hearing, and we can all talk about all the many reasons, some of, many of which you've already heard. But this is a really good document. I've looked at it. It's legal. Other counties have adopted something similar to it. I ask that you, I strongly urge you to consider it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Quinn Robinson, District Four. And that will be it.
Good evening, gentlemen. Ms. Carter, my name is Quinn Robinson. I live out in Andersonville, District Four. Mr. Miles is my supervisor. And I think Mrs. Ragland started things off with a very good summary of all the reasons why they should not go forward in terms of the gold mining. And I'm not exactly clear on what an ordinance would do, as opposed to just an outright prohibition, but I would favor the latter. My family has been out in Andersonville since 1852 in some form or another, and I just came back here after retiring to be the caretaker of the cemetery and watch things grow, hoping for a difference in the dynamic that Buckingham has not had in the past. I'm not sure we're there yet, but I would ask you to postpone this if you're not going to shut it down. But anything with mining of cyanide, mercury, and those light metals does no good for us. It's a hazard, and it's something you can't repair, as the papers have noted. You've got abandoned gold mines full of... You've got abandoned gold mines full of mercury and cyanide and things like that. And it speaks poorly of the county for not defending against those things should they go ahead. Now, those other mines were done many, many years ago. So let's beat it to the punch and get it done right. There was something else in terms of why this happens. We just survived a real challenge from Dominion Power about the pipeline. And they were, I think they were wrong in so many accounts, and the courts proved them, proved that later. But this board or its predecessors supported much of what they did and collaborated with it. It's time to stop that. Be critical. Be critical of what these people are doing. And I wouldn't trust Wareheiser any more than I would Dominion. And Dominion is getting ready to dump coal ash into the Janes, which is the drinking water for many people. Anyway, please be thoughtful about it and take a stand. Don't let them push you around anymore. It's like, whatever money they've got, we'll be all right. You've got to raise the taxes a couple of pennies every four or five years. We'll survive it. But it cannot survive what they're asking for. Thank you very much.
Next on our agenda is VDOT advisor, Mr. Scott Frederick.
Evening, Board and Chairman, or Vice Chair and County Administrator Carter. Wanted to first update you on the debris piles. We put that out to bid once, and the bids came in higher than expected. So we put it back out to bid with more options on it, and it closes on the fourteenth of July. So hopefully after that, we get good bids that we can live with and we'll be awarding it to somebody to get rid of those piles. So I know everybody's ready to have them off the right of ways, myself included. The culvert that I mentioned was being replaced last month on seven eighteen has completed. The road is back open. I think they're going to come back in in about a month and do some more asphalt work. I'm not a hundred percent sure on their schedule there, but at least the roadway is back open to traffic again. Following up more from last meeting, we've had a lot of storms this month. We had one last week where we were out till two o'clock in the morning cleaning up trees that just keep getting blown down. But the Supervisor Matthews, he brought up some trees that had been laying on the sides of the road for a while, specifically on Hyvee Road and Curdsville Road. I know we've gone back and got that stuff cleaned up. So we're still trying to play catch-up on the new stuff that keeps coming down, but I think we're in a better place now than we were last month. You also brought up a leaning tree on Francisco Road, and we went out there and kind of surveyed the situation. I think we ended up taking down about seventeen trees out there. So we don't want to go out there at two o'clock in the morning and get any of them. So anytime we can strategically get them down, we try to do our best with that. But thank you for letting us know about it. We've been, Mr. Bryant, you brought up a brush on six oh two, and I kind of checked where we are on brush. We're strategically working our way through the county. Both area headquarters have been running their boomaxes as much as they can. I'm not exactly sure if they've worked their way through six oh two at this point or not yet, but...
I'm glad more is coming toward fifty-six. It needs to be brushes in a row, really.
Yeah, I agree. We've got a lot of work to do on brush, but I just wanted to let you know we're attacking it as best we can. So, Mr. Allen, you brought up Randolph Creek. It came off the six-year plan accidentally. I did look into it. It was on the previous plan, which was approved. And when we changed the format, the way we used to, we were putting the roads in the comment section under one UPC. We switched back to having each road have its own UPC. But somehow, when we transposed one system to the other, we missed that one. But we're going to put it back in the plan next year, right where it used to be. So thank you for catching that and bringing it to my attention. Speaking of rural rustic work, we've completed Hunting Shack Road and Payne's Pond Road. The surfaces are down. The only thing left to do is to put up the thirty-five mile an hour speed limit signs. And then I just wanted to mention that we know we have a clogged pipe on Payne's Pond Road. We're going to get that opened back up real soon, just in case anybody's mentioned it to you. And we'll be starting the rural rustic work on Virginia Mill Road in the very near future. I'll be hoping to tell you it's finished at the next meeting. Then I'm kind of, kind of shift gears here. Two years ago, I presented some crash data and contributing factors for those crashes. I took last year off because of COVID. There was about a two-month period where people really didn't drive a whole lot in twenty twenty. So I felt like that data might not be worth talking about. But the twenty twenty-one numbers are finally posted. I use the DMV's website to get them because they have them. The information on all the different types of crashes is, it's very sorted and easy to navigate through on their website for anybody. So I'd encourage anybody to look at it if they'd like to. But it's somewhat well-known there was nine hundred and sixty-eight fatalities on our roadways in twenty twenty-one. We put it up on our variable message boards, or there's messaging about it on our social media. But I think what's not very well-known is that of those statewide fatalities, there was, alcohol was a contributing factor in two hundred and forty-seven of them. Three hundred and thirty-four of them had unrestrained either passengers or drivers. And then four hundred and forty-five of them, speed was calculated, or they figured out that speed was a contributing, contributing factor in four hundred and forty-five of them. So as you go through their website, you can go down to the specific county. So since I'm in Buckingham tonight, I feel like I should share the numbers for Buckingham County. There was a hundred and eighty-one total crashes, not necessarily fatalities. There was six fatalities involved in those hundred and eighty-one crashes. So then for contributing factors, four of them had alcohol-related. Four of them had speed-related, and five of them had unrestrained either drivers or passengers. So as far as the contributing factors, I feel like if we could eliminate those, we could, we could drastically reduce the amount of fatalities that we take or that we, you know, we have each year on our roadways. So the DMV's website says that seatbelt uses, seatbelt usage is at eighty-one point seven percent. So that's like roughly four out of five people wear their seatbelt. So another statistic, this is off the National Highway Traffic Safety Administration, just specific to seatbelts, says if you're in the front seat of a car, you're forty-five percent, or you reduce your risk of fatality by forty-five percent just by wearing your seatbelt in the front seat of a car. So I'm glad there's a decent-sized crowd here tonight. I like to get this information out in front of as many people as possible. So last little thing about numbers here, I'm a little bit of a numbers guy. So it's one of my favorite presentations as far as just getting to talk about numbers. If you take the number of licensed drivers, which is ten thousand five hundred and twenty-four in Buckingham County, and then you figure out the number of fatalities, it gives you a death rate of zero point five seven per one thousand drivers. So I mean, when you're looking at the numbers off the website, you see all the different decimal points. Like to put that into terms, you've got to divide it, but that's one out of one thousand seven hundred and fifty-five. And I think that's kind of a sobering thought because that's, in about a year's time, I think I meet about that many people, somewhere fifteen hundred to two thousand people. So that's like, right in that neighborhood, one of those drivers in the numbers I'm crunching right here dies in a fatality. So, you know, that just kind of brings it on home for me. So share this message, please, to wear your seatbelt, don't drink and drive, and don't speed either. That's probably the one I struggle with the most. So at this point, I'll shift gears back to the normal meeting and open it up for questions, comments, concerns.
Wanting to have a roadmap for Mr. Bryant? Put it in, Allen?
I got some. We talked about it a little bit, but I just wanted to tell y'all about it a little bit, too. We got two S U Ps in Alphonia by the Health Center. And there's three driveways, commercial driveways that's going to come up. And with the VDOT distancing, it's six hundred and sixty feet, did I say that right? Six hundred and sixty feet apart. And I don't think we got that much driveway distance in between each one of them. That's something we need to look at when we look at these next S U Ps. I just want to make sure. If you've got any questions, you can ask him, and he'll tell you which one. But that's going to come up here shortly.
Mr. Matthews?
Six hundred and sixty feet from one side of the driveway to the next driveway, if it's a commercial entrance?
Yes, and we're going to have three of them right in a row. We're going to be talking about the Health Center. Then you're going to have the Dollar General, this, or Dollar Tree that's talking about coming up. And then Mr. Stofus's business is going to come behind that. So you're going to have three of them. So something we're going to have to work hard because it ain't, not our dirty it's going to be. I don't have a measurement.
Is that set in stone, or is that something that they can petition the state VDOT to look at?
I think the answer to your question is yes. To the, to the, there's options. The six hundred and sixty-six feet, six hundred and sixty feet is for a full driveway where you can make a right in, a right out, a left in, a left out. So you could go down to three hundred and thirty feet if you can make that driveway just strictly right turn in and right turn out. So you would deny lefts. Or there's other options that I think are in the Virginia code where if that corridor already is like a business corridor, where there's already substandard spacing on driveways, then you can match what's already existing. So I don't know the land up there real well to know what the spacing is on all the driveways. It could be reviewed. I think there would be another option to maybe have the business owners come together and do interconnectivity where there's one driveway that feeds all three. So I don't, I don't think they're limited just by our standards on being able to have a business.
Have a, other than an email, like a cell phone that you could receive pictures at, that I can send something to?
Yes, sir. I could give you my card. It's on my card. I'll run you one inside. I think, it's the one that, I think, Ma'am, you've talked on it before. That's my number.
I've got some pictures I'd like to send you.
Okay.
Relation to one of the roads that had still hadn't got cleaned up.
Okay, I'm happy to take a look at it.
Okay. And there's some other problems on that road, too, now. Washing, we've had some bad rains, some thunderstorms this past week. So it's only going to get worse unless we get some, something in it to stop the washing so bad.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Frederick. Appreciate it.
A few potholes on sixteen.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Board.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Can we move on to public hearings? Ms. Emerson, the first one?
Yes, sir. The first case before you is a public hearing regarding case twenty-two, S U P two ninety-eight. Landowner and applicant is Ike Yoder. The property is located at Tax Map one ninety-four, parcel fifteen. Has about a hundred and twenty-two acres, and it is at seven zero four one Crump Town Road, Farmville in the Curdsville Magisterial District. This is an A-one district. This case was introduced to you last month. The applicant does wish to obtain a special use permit for the purpose of operating the sawmill. This case, of course, came through the Planning Commission initially in November. It was a request to suspend consideration. Mr. Yoder and his engineer, Chip Coleman, with Maxine Associates, are available this evening to address any additional questions, concerns regarding traffic and noise, pollution, and different things of that nature as well. We do have some individuals signed up for the public hearing. Vice Chair Chambers.
Thank you. During the supervisory, having a question for them. Mr. Yoder, you said Mr. Yoder here?
Yes, sir.
During the supervisory, having a question for... At this time, we open the public hearing. Anybody want to speak in the public hearing concerning the Crump Road project?
First one signed up is James Lenny Rosser, District Five.
Rosser?
Lenny Rosser, and I made a mistake on my district. I came from District Four. I often do that.
Okay.
I apologize, and thank you for having me up here. I'd like to speak in terms of Trump Town Road as far as that bummer yard going in there is concerned there, and the people that are going to be responsible for that are being riding buggies, horse and buggies and what have you. And to me, that's suicide. That road is worse than twenty. I almost piled in the back of one of those things the other day. I was doing a speed limit, and I ran around the bend. There was a boat, well, it looked like a sign that you see on the side of the road there. It had lights on and everything, and it confuses you when you first look at it, if you've never seen one before anyway. But anyhow, I just, I started to pull out, and there's a car coming the other way. And it's a good thing I have good brakes on my car, I mean, really good brakes. And I didn't miss them by much, and they were just trying to get out of those seats and everything else. And that's just on Route twenty. Now, on this road that they're going to put that along, it's like a roller coaster. It's a lot worse than what twenty is, and twenty's a problem. Two or three people have died in those buggies on Route twenty. And I think, you know, I don't even know who put that ordinance in there to allow them on there. They don't even pay for tags on the back of their vehicle, but it doesn't make sense. It looks like suicide to me. But then again, I'm just, my opinion. But I'm hoping that, well, the district isn't set up for that. It's not the right, right area for them. And I heard, said that if they put it there, it'll gain jobs. Well, it doesn't make any difference where you put it. If it's a good, a good business, and lumber always is, it'll make money anywhere you put it. But I would like to speak in terms of, I think it's a bad idea, and I hope you all don't pass it. That's about it. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
David Ball, District Three.
Good evening. David Ball, District Three. Well, to start off, I was looking at Google Earth because I haven't had a, I haven't been down Crump Town Road in probably about a year. But I was looking at the site and noting that it seems to be a typical problem with where they've situated their entrance. And there was a lot of trees that had been previously cleared off the site. But one of the things that I find kind of difficult is that recently, and I say recently, within the past year, that looking at stuff from Google Earth, that they've gone back to old maps, old pictures. Because I've looked at a number of sites and projects that are proposed here around the county, and I'm looking at stuff that's five, ten years old. And it doesn't reflect what's currently out there. So if somebody looks at Google Earth, they're not going to be able to look at this and see what's actually, actually there. So I think, sad to say, Google Earth, in my opinion, appears to be somewhat unreliable. But given the fact that the site has a site difference, which seems to be typical with these projects that have come up, and there's been a couple of them here in the county, really, there needs to be something a little bit more done with VDOT and working to get the site distance for these entrances. Let alone that they're going to do a milling operation, that's fine. We're a forestry county, and we've got a lot of timber to use. But we really want to make sure that these entrances and the amount of traffic that's going to be coming in here is adequate. And if necessary, adding in a turn lane for deceleration for vehicles that come in. I mean, if you're going to be hauling timber in a big truck in and out, you're going to need that road. I mean, otherwise, you're kind of putting the local people at a risk. Now, I know there's a trucking company up the road, and I don't think they would disagree. You'd really want to have a deceleration place so that they can safely and accurately and adequately enter and exit the property. And that seems to be... And that seems to be one of the big problems that needs to be addressed. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Jonathan Dick, District Three.
Good evening, folks.
Good evening, sir.
Um, first off, I wanna tell you something my wife said to let you folks know. You are the gatekeepers. You are the folks that are supposed to protect us. We shouldn't really, she didn't say all this, this is me. I, I find it's like my time to come here and plead a case that I feel like should have been blocked long ago. I mean, you were at the planning commission when we spoke. There are so many bad things about making an exception in this particular agriculture area. The road being one, the gentleman just brought up. It is downhill to that entrance. It's actually sixteen foot, five inches. I measured it today. Tractor trailer, logging trailer is a hundred and two inches. That's eight and a half foot. Somebody's dropping off. If one's coming out and one's coming in. Or Holiday Lakes right down the road. People drive down that road to Holiday Lake with campers. Uh, there was a gentleman earlier that spoke about, we've got land to put that sort of industry in. It, it doesn't need to be passed off and, you know, to the next person and let VDOT deal with it because it's, the road needs improvement. You folks are the gatekeepers. This is not good for anyone on Crump Town Road but the individual that wants to work from home. Another gentleman's gonna speak and he says it's a minor inconvenience. It shouldn't be an inconvenience to us at all. We bought land to be quiet, which has been the ongoing theme tonight, and, and not to be inconvenienced. I mean, seriously, it, it is no benefit. And I feel like really what should happen is that the people that go for these special use permits should bring y'all the petitions. Here, I've got the neighbor's sign, we want this. That the burden of proof should be on them, not on the residents of Crump Town Road to spend their time hour and a half to come speak. You are the gatekeepers. You folks should protect us. This is not a good plan. I sent everyone an email. There's no benefit. I showed you a picture, if you got it. I don't have it here, neither, either. Um, it, it's just by default, all the special use permits should be no. We have a comprehensive plan. So again, thank you so much. I hope you do the right thing.
Thank you, sir.
James Anderson, District Three.
Good evening, gentlemen.
Good afternoon, sir.
I live on Crump Town Road. And I'm doing a dovetail off of what Jonathan just shared. An hour of road. There's no way two logging trucks could, not even two logging trucks, a logging truck and a pickup truck cannot pass each other at the same time. I'm retired. I used to do business. Worked in business, I wasn't, you know. Gentleman who bought that farm, Mr. Yoder, bless him. But I guarantee you, he knew what he was gonna do when he bought that farm. He knew he was gonna build a sawmill there that was more than just a family sawmill, like the Bolt Sawmill. Cause I read his plan that he proposed when it first came up, just talking about millions of dollars. That's gonna be a lot of traffic. I'm a single man. It's just me on the road. But there are families with kids that come up and down New Store Road. We have a burgeoning population of Amish folk coming here that ride buggies. All those roads have serpentines in them. Sometimes a guy that's driving the truck, he makes a decision to cut the corner. He can't see around the corner. It's only a statistic, the gentleman from VDOT just said here. It's only a statistical matter of time where somebody gets nailed. There was a comprehensive plan, zoning plan, that's put in place to see how Buckingham County develops. Doesn't have anything to do with the demographics of who's gonna start a business. Gonna start a major business, do it on a major highway. Fifteen, sixty, that's what dealing is for. Don't try to sneak in the back door, buy a farm, claim agriculture, and then execute your business plan. It's already been decided where business development is supposed to occur. We're talking about Buckingham County. Laws in place. You guys do your job. Make the people who come to Buckingham do what the Romans do. We're in Buckingham, we pay taxes. We know what the laws are. Everybody should follow the law. Thank you for my time.
Thank you, sir.
Richard Gordon, District Three.
Yes. I'm a licensed professional engineer in seventeen states. And, uh, this land where I live is zoned agricultural and residential use group, not B for business or commercial, or I for industrial. The theme of A, use group, needs to be maintained, also for preserving integrity of the environment at agricultural and residential areas. I'm reading here excerpts from environmental health and safety guidelines for sawmilling and manufactured wood products put out by World Bank Group and Industrial, I'm sorry, International Finance Corporation. Now, I'm all for progress, but it's not just about sawing trees here. It has to be in the right use group, like business or industrial. Industry-specific impacts and management. Environmental issues associated with sawmilling and wood products manufacturing primarily include the following. Sustainable forestry practices, solid waste generation, emissions to air, wastewater, noise, and fire. Solid waste generation conversion efficiency. Solid waste generation is directly related to the conversion efficiency of roundwood to saw and lumber or other final products. Conversion efficiencies from roundwood to saw and lumber are often below forty percent. The use of modern equipment and trained staff may increase the efficiencies to seventy percent. Emissions to air. Air emissions from sawmill operations are generated from a number of sources. Combustion products emitted by boilers may include carbon monoxide, nitrous oxide, sulfur oxides, particulate matter, and volatile organic compounds from bark and wood depending upon fuel selection. VOCs may be emitted during kiln drying of wood and application of solvents, coatings, and lacquers. Wood dust and larger particulates are generated during sawing, machining, and sanding operations. Sawmill operations may use controlled incineration to dispose of wood waste, which may result in emissions of carbon monoxide, nitrous oxides, particulate matter, and volatile organic compounds from bark and wood. Wastewater. Industrial processed wastewater effluent from sawmills is generated from runoff from irrigated storage areas known as log yards and log ponds. Wastewater is also generated from chemical coating of wood. Toxic wood preservation chemicals may include polonyucler aromatic hydrocarbons, pentachlorophenol, other pesticides, and compounds of chrome, copper, and arsenic. Processed wastewater containing chemical preservatives should be contained as part of a closed-loop application systems. The runoff from log yards and log ponds may contain toxic chemicals such as tannins, phenols, resins, and fatty acids, leached from timber and soil and other materials washed, washed out of the bark. Occupational health and safety. Issues associated with sawmilling and wood products manufacturing primarily include physical hazards, noise, dust, chemicals, explosions.
Your time, I'm sorry.
Five minutes?
You know, you know what? I apologize. They cut the five minutes out. I didn't, they had five minutes, but they cut it back to three, that's right?
Kevin, he's speaking for more than one person than he can speak.
That's what I'm saying, they cut that out. Yes, sir. And I, you know, forgot about it. So I apologize.
Right, sir. Okay.
Alan Todd, District Three.
Good evening. I'm a relative newcomer to Buckingham County. I bought in two thousand and sixteen. But I live on Crump Town Road, and actually, I'm probably the closest person to the sawmill. And, or the proposed sawmill, I should say. My two main concerns are what everybody else has said. Number one is safety. That road is, is not suitable for big logging trucks. And it's not gonna be a question of if, it's gonna be a question of when. Something bad happens on that road with a logging truck and either a car, a pickup truck, or heaven forbid, a buggy. We all know the buggy accidents that have happened in Buckingham County, there never is a good outcome. So that's my main concern. And what nobody else has said yet that I'm concerned about is the noise. You get twenty, thirty log trucks a day coming through that road is one thing. But to have the constant noise from the operation, as a crow flies, it's probably less than a quarter of a mile from my house to the proposed operation. And it sits up on a hill. So it's gonna generate considerable noise. I bought my place so I could get away from Richmond and, uh, the noise and the neighbors. So that's why I bought in Buckingham. And I would just urge you to please do the right thing and not approve this. Thank you.
Alfred Buzik, District Three.
My name is Al Buzik, and, um, I don't live on Crump Town Road, but on the corner, I'm in District Three. Matthews is my, uh, and I guess, uh, sitting here listening to all, all these good reasons and questions they have, I would just like to be one of the few that makes that young man feel comfortable being in our county, even if this doesn't go through. I think, I think it's very difficult to raise your family. Sometimes as neighbors, we don't wanna get in their way. But I feel, um, confidence in, and trust in your decision-making process. And I also want to know, I want them to know that, and my neighbors as well, I'm not against, by any means. Well, I'm not, that's, when you deal with someone's life, when you deal with someone's, um, ability to provide for their family, it's more than a football game. It's, it's a livelihood. I lived under communism. It was no fun. And I'm afraid that some of that garbage is following us here. We live in a land of freedom and liberty. And we shouldn't, you know, like, and I'm the minor inconvenience guy that he mentioned earlier. I just want them to at least know that, you know, they're trying to do something good, that some of us would support that. But again, there, there are rules in place, there are things that have to be considered. And I, I understand all of them. But I just want them to know that at least I'm, you know, rooting for them. And if they have to change whatever they need to do to make it work, um, I'd like to see that. But I also love my neighbors, and I love Buckingham County. And I love what you guys are doing to Sawmill Road, cleaning it up. We have a very good functioning county. We have a lot of trust in you guys and a lot of the things that were said about the mining and everything. I don't wanna take too much time because I haven't eaten, so you guys take care.
That's all.
And the supervisory, having a question for Mr. Yoder? Close the public hearing.
Well, the last time we had talked about it, it was something to do with the, the driveway. I think it's, we started to hold it, uh, but don't hold, but went to this.
You can come up, yes. Sir?
Can we send our engineer up?
There's yet.
Good evening, I'm Ike Yoder, seven zero four on Crump Town Road.
Okay, there was a question on?
Now, VDOT had last week seen what, hadn't approved the road. And then it was said that, uh, engineer was gonna be working on it, but?
Well, what I have in hand is the application form for the, for this process. And I, I assume everybody got the additional information in your packet. And in Exhibit E of that packet was where, um, Charles Edwards had signed off that a traffic impact statement is not required. But then the question was, does the existing entrance meet VDOT requirements for the proposed use? And the answer was no. But then it says applicant has been issued a VDOT land use permit, which is in appendix, Appendix A, to perform necessary site work to bring entrance into compliance for proposed use. So he has been issued a permit to upgrade the entrance for the proposed use. That work has not been completed because he was under a stop. But he has a permit to do the work per that permit. Does that make sense?
I'm just, I just wanna make sure. I know, I know, last time it was no real answer to it.
Well, I'm just trying to bring?
Yeah. What work is that that has to be completed, so?
Well, it's, it's per the permit, um, which, to tell you the truth, it was, it was a permit that was written before I came on board. So I think it was a widening of the road, of the entrance, the existing driveway entrance and an extended. I did talk to Mr. Edwards early on in this process, and he said, site distance with pulling back the bank, part of it was pulling back the bank right there at the entrance, adequate. I didn't, I didn't address it at that point. I had a permit in hand, and I had his application form saying.
How many trucks a day would you be getting, Mr. Yoder? Just curious.
Thirty, what did I have down there? I can't remember.
Twenty or thirty a day?
I'm sorry, hold on a second.
Forty to sixty.
Mr. Yoder has indicated in his application narrative that there would be fifteen to twenty vehicles a day.
So I looked at that as the maximum, twenty. And they go both ways, so that's forty vehicles.
We got the VDOT man here today, so I guess we could ask him, y'all willing to widen that road all the way from Prince Edward County all the way through to Crump Town Road? Would that ever, would that ever be something that could happen? A long-range plan? Okay.
I, I do believe that the most traffic for tractor trailers would turn off Francisco, go down Francisco.
Off of fifteen?
Off fifteen, and then take, I think it's one point.
Crump Town is still sixteen and a half, what?
He's not in.
Pardon me. Let's give him the same respect that he give y'all. He didn't talk while y'all had public conversations. Give him the same respect, please.
So, so you're saying, percentage-wise, as far as the tractor trailer, uh, traffic would be coming down Route Fifteen to Francisco Road and coming in that way? But there's nothing to say they, they can't come because, you know, what is the impact study showing, uh, Mr. Fred? Do you know actually the numbers on that road? What the, the traffic count is or anything on any given day of the week?
I didn't bring it with me. I can give you the numbers I came up with from the two thousand and nineteen study. On Francisco Road, I had an average, annual average daily traffic of six hundred and seventy vehicles per day, with four percent of them being trucks.
Hundred and seventy?
Crump Town Road, I had, uh, annual daily, average daily traffic of a hundred and forty vehicles per day.
I'm, I'm confused.
Trucks is not published for that size road.
The first figure was on Francisco Road?
That's right.
Okay.
That was six hundred and what?
Six hundred and seventy.
Six hundred and seventy.
And that's on, that's on Francisco, which is six thirty-six. It comes off of fifteen heading west to Crump Town Road.
A lot of traffic.
Four percent of that, six hundred and seventy, was truck traffic.
Twenty-seven vehicles per day.
Right, currently? Or what was?
It was, it was the two thousand and nineteen study because I think, as you mentioned before, two thousand and twenty studies aren't very reliable because of COVID.
And then on, on Crump Town Road itself, what was the traffic count on that particular road?
A hundred and forty vehicles per day.
A hundred and forty vehicles a day.
And truck traffic wasn't published. And truck traffic wasn't published.
What is the maximum number? Did it say that in the study of what could uh, travel that road? Be within the guidelines of the?
Well, I, what I pulled from was um, the Federal Highway Administration's Highway Functional Classification Concepts, Criteria and Procedures, which was the two thousand thirteen edition. Um, a major collector, which Francisco Road is a major collector, should fall within the range of three hundred to twenty-six hundred vehicles per day. Same study on a local road in rural areas was the range of fifteen.
On Crump Town Road, is that what you?
I understand, you said that VDOT haven't, you mean you haven't finished the application yet, what you got from VDOT with the road, with the entrance?
VDOT has, has issued a entrance permit for this road, meaning there is a land use permit to build the entrance. And I've got a copy of it in the edition.
They gave you permit to get a engineer to build a road, yeah?
They gave a permit to construct it.
Yeah, an engineer to construct a road.
Permit to actually construct it. I mean, I mean, that's how the land use permit works, correct?
Fire or not, the, whether or not we issue the permit, we have nothing to do with zoning. All users. Guys give them the permit, we issue.
In just a minute, we'll, we'll keep you in mind just a second. Hold, hold your thought, cause let these guys finish what?
Right.
Any other questions that we have for them? I understand what you said, Mr. Frederick, as far as you don't get into the zoning or permitting of business in the district or wherever they're gonna put it. But uh, as far as you know, I'm sure you've traveled that road. The road's built to specific, state specifications, right? And it's meeting the criteria that needs to be met as far as a road being built and the conditions of the road.
One of the roads that, that the Bird Act was nineteen thirty-two, Hampton State Highway.
It built any differently than any other rural roads in Buckingham County, as far as the width of it, the, the dimensions of it? I mean, just about all of them are about the same, right, as far as?
So how you tell the difference between the two roads? You was looking at one of them, it was uh, fifteen vehicles to four hundred. The other one's like three hundred to twenty-six or something.
Based on the uh, classification of the road, functional classification. And Francisco Road is considered a major collector. The other one's a lo- local road, which means?
There were some other issues too with EPA and DEQ. Uh, can you maybe give us some information on that, possibly?
The property is currently under a notice of violation. Stream impacts was one notice, and the second one was for not having proper permitting to do construction. Um, I came on board after these violations were issued. And it was just deal with one at a time. Notice of the stream impacts, um, requirements from Kara Witt, who was inspection, about cleaning, cleaning up the streams. Better and his team cleaned up the streams. So we, I asked her, I, I think she did a second, what she did in the second inspection, because we needed to know where does it sit, or has he complied? And she responded in an email. And the email is provided in, in the additional information. It says DEQ VWP, which would be the water protection side, which is her, conducted a follow-up compliance inspection on December fifteenth. We re-inspected the stream channel and found the correction action complete with new, no new violations observed. Nothing further is needed from Mr. Yoder at this time. Whether that closes that notice of violation, I don't know. When is things closed out? So in, in my opinion, she's saying that he, he corrected the problem he created there. So when we go into the notice of violation that deals with stormwater permitting, Mr. Yoder had disturbed over an acre of land. That typically is when you would need a stormwater permit on this, for Buckingham County is the state, DEQ. Some other localities do it in-house. And so there was a report that there was more disturbance than the acre. They came out inspected, they did a report, they listed several different things that needed to be done, which a lot of these things in a normal project would be done before the first storm disturbance took place. The whole process to get that actual stormwater, starting with you prepare a stormwater management plan. It gets reviewed by the EQ, back and forth on comments and responses, at which point, when that plan is approved, then you go into the next stage, which actually deals with getting the permit. Standard permit, but there's a letter, a letter of coverage that goes with it that gives you permission to actually start the work. We have submitted a stormwater management plan to DEQ. I have gotten a review back. I've gotten, and we also submitted that to the Peter Francisco Soil and Water Council. I've gotten any comments back. In reviewing, in their review, there were several items that we need, would need to address. Then we were back into this process of this special use permit. Rather than go at four, I designed the plan as if there was a sawmill there. That's worst-case scenario on a stormwater manager. Put all this impervious area up on this hill. When we came back and we were in this process and getting closer to the end, I recommended to Mr. Yoder that we wait and see what the board decides. Because if the special use permit does not go through, we will substantially change the plan so it doesn't deal with all this impervious area. Eighty-state, which does, does different things on how you would do calculations, how you deal with cost per loadings, different things like that, basins. So we are in the process, we're in, in between reviews.
Are you willing to answer any questions from the residents, if they got some questions for you here, of the people that?
What happened? I, I misled the gentleman behind you. I told him five minutes, I cut him off at three. And he had a question. Let him, he was speaking, let me just ask him a question. He had a question next?
Wait, wait. This is a matter of?
Thank you.
I don't know a lot about the sawmilling process, you know, would, that purely a site design. But I asked Ike when he was mentioning different chemicals, I was like, are you kilning this wood? Which I think a lot of the processes he was speaking of was dealing with kilning it, drying it, putting down chemicals on it to preserve it. Are you, you're just doing raw lumber, right? So you're cutting it, stacking it, selling it as raw?
Well, if I had five minutes.
Are, are you gonna have a kiln on site? Raw timber setting outside that you're gonna be cutting up, right? I don't have a debarker there, any other equipment. What else? I mean, other than a diesel generator?
A debarker.
Is it anything else?
That's all being loaded for?
Let me ask you a question. I, I'm a firm believer in setting some conditions and parameters on businesses like yours, whether it's this county or other counties. I think that, you know, the citizens that are, that do live next to these sites should have some protection from noise. Are you against any type of uh, destruction that would help soften the, the noise, such as a, some type of building that a debarker could be put in? Or a uh, generator so that it would muffle the sound to a level that these people wouldn't basically hear it at all?
Well, he, Chip has some data on the noise.
Okay. Yeah, we'll listen to it. I mean, that's what we're here for. But my question is, to ease their mind, if, if it goes forward to, to, to the next scenario, you know, I think you're gonna have to agree to some of these conditions that would help eliminate some of that stuff. That's just my opinion. And we're gonna let a couple of these other people ask some questions once we get to this, to the next step here in just a minute. But uh, the other thing too, would be, in my opinion, would be to possibly uh, limit your, your days of work, which would be Monday through Saturday, Monday through Friday. Uh, and and also is a concern of mine with, with school bus traffic on this particular road too. So with all that said, and I know there's a, there's a business at the end of Crump Town Road that works on semi-trucks and tractor trailers, and I've seen loaded tractor trailers at that site too. And, you know, your numbers kinda speak to me a little bit. Six hundred and seventy vehicles uh, a day on Francisco Road and four percent of that is truck traffic. So, you know, that's not, that's not a lot of traffic as far as I'm concerned, the way I'm looking at it. But uh, with that being said, if you, if you add uh, your business to that equation, it's gonna increase it twenty, thirty, twice. So it'd be sixty possibly at the top, at the outside edge of traffic going and coming. So of course, that, that amount is gonna increase the four percent, which, you know, VDOT has already said, you know, within those guidelines and from the study that they've done, this road is built to handle anywhere from three hundred to twenty-six hundred vehicles a day. So, but I think some of the conditions as far as your, your work schedule, times of day, that that's gonna happen. And also possibly working with some type of uh, construction of, of a building with some type of insulation that's gonna muffle the sound of any of this equipment. And, I mean, you know what I know, when you ride into Log Woods or wherever it may be, and there's been log, there's been sawmills across this county for, for hundreds of years, you know. And our county, our county prides itself on being a timber and logging community. We have, we put a lot of people to work in the timber business and the timber industry. And that's important to me, uh, because it puts some of my people to work that live in my district. And I think that's important. You're trying to make a livelihood, you're trying to fend for your family and do the right thing. But uh, you know, the people that, that you live next to, your neighbors and stuff, you wanna get along with those people. We wanna do the right thing for those people too. They have a right to, to a quality of life that they, uh, when they bought their piece of land here. So we wanna keep that in, in perspective too. So anyway, uh, I'm just throwing that out there. Before I move this thing on, I'd like to see some conditions put in there to address those things that I just talked about. You know, Coleman or whatever, whoever's doing your engineering plans, that maybe we can come up with an idea to do that. But uh, Mr. Anderson, you had a question or a statement that you wanted to make? Or ask these gentlemen or?
Gentlemen, that had it.
Okay, yeah. There, I think there was.
I didn't know what I was gonna do.
I decided to build a business like that and I looked at your first, why don't you put it, put it where, where it's on?
Charlotte County.
Not necessarily Charlotte County, I mean, Buckingham, that are already zoned for business. Sawmill. Major routes, like fifteen, sixty.
We, uh. Let's move, uh.
Have you ever thought about taking, you know, your, your business idea and putting it where the county has decided that you won't risk people who are driving up and down the road, whether they be in a buggy or a school bus or a lady? You know, have you ever thought about that?
I have not.
Will you do that?
We got, we got a suggestion for you, uh, Mr. Anderson. Hold on, Mr. Coleman and Mr. Yoder. Hold on, hold on.
Thank you, sir. Let me ask you, I apologize. I've cut him off. You got another question? Yes, sir. You were saying something else, you said, you didn't have?
Thanks God besides, Mr. Dick.
I'm sorry, Mr. Dick. Yes, sir.
That says you can do, wind the driveway, you can do this within that zone. And that should be sacred. And that's the whole purpose of the codes in the first place.
Mr. Matthew got some more conditions he was talking about. I, I recommend the board that they were tableless. And Mr. Matthew, get rid of Mr. Yoder. Say y'all work this out and go from there. I don't think we should vote on tonight. I think should be tabled.
I'm now here too, that the traffic number is seventeen hundred and sixty on Route six thirty-six.
Eighteen hundred.
Seventeen hundred and sixty, come off of VDOT. VDOT man here, he can look for it if he wants to. If he got time.
That online? Did you pick that off online?
I just got it.
Yeah, what year is that? That's the most recent. And Mr. Coleman, yours is twenty nineteen?
This is two thousand nineteen, cause twenty twenty-one wasn't available with.
Right, 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 okay.
Can I get a motion for the board to table this?
I'll, I'll give the motion to, to, to table this for consideration of the conditions, uh, moving forward, till we can get some answers for those and input from the community. Is it anything, I'm, I'm just gonna ask the group that's here, uh, the citizens that are concerned, is it, is it anything he could do that would make you, you know, consider this project? I mean, I'm just asking.
The thing that is, to answer your question for myself anyway, is first off, whatever, if, if it's, if, whatever conditions he puts, you put, you board, if you were to put conditions on, would still have tractor trailers that are a hundred and two inches in width, going on a road that only accommodates sixteen foot. And the buses would be there. My mother-in-law is eighty-four, Richard down the road, I mean, Russell down the road is eighty-five. You've got people running down. And I'm telling you what, I were, I retired from UPS thirty-five years. I understand the trucking industry. And they do not go the route you tell them. And we, we're talking about teamsters that are being instructed to drive a certain way. And I guess another thing that concerns me is it's my understanding that this gentleman owns. owns a sawmill in Charlotte County and then comes and acts like he didn't know permits were necessary? I mean, are we operating in good faith here?
I see what you're saying, okay. Look.
Okay.
I don't, I don't see anything you can do to stop the trucks other than to...
But there, there, there's sawmills and trucks in other locales of this county too.
Right.
Wrong, go make a right.
Right.
Think you should address your current business. It was an existing mill site. Not develop that yourself or... On an existing business.
Existing. In Charlotte County is what you're saying, the one that he's at now? Okay.
That's fair, that's fair with you, sir. Sir. What's his name, though?
Well, the question was, he purchased a business in, in Charlotte County that was an existing business, so, you know, he didn't build that out the way it is. So he brought it the way, the way it was, the way it is now in Charlotte County, and that's where his business is now. So that, that's the statement that he's making, so, okay.
What the problem got you, Mr. Yoka? He did supervise that area, he had a problem with some old conditions. That's why I asked you to table and talk with him. Y'all get together on the conditions? I don't think, I think it'd be fair to everybody, you know, okay? So we got a motion, a second on the floor, all in favor of table?
You gotta make a motion.
I thought Mr. Matthews...
I did, I made it, so. I didn't hit the button.
Did you second it or not, Danny?
Yeah, I got it seconded, yeah.
All right. It been motion, it been motion by supervisor Matthew, second by supervisor Allen, that we will table this to...
Really? What, what I want you to do is get with Ms. Edmondson about the conditions. I'll get with her about that, so you're not coming to me directly. You'll be going through her, because she's our zoning...
Going work to go.
Yeah.
Table it. Yeah, uh-huh.
Well, yeah, you send us, you send us what you'd like to have as conditions in this motion.
We table it to the further, you know, further.
We didn't know.
Your notice says you approved it.
No.
Voted by Matthews, seconded by Allen, already voted, and you approved it.
Who did when?
It doesn't say approved on that, so.
That's what it says!
That might be up there, or it doesn't say it here.
We didn't do that.
The motion is to table, and that motion is approved.
The motion to a table is approved, not the motion, not the motion to... Well...
It doesn't say.
Only motion, the only motion I asked for on the floor was to table this to later. That's the only motion that should be up there, right?
That is standard wording. Whatever motion y'all state, it's approved.
Okay. That the motion was approved to table it, yeah, not approved. That's fair with you, sir? I tell you, that's fair with you?
He's, he's the actor.
Okay, all right. Okay. Okay, I'm trying to be fair. All in favor?
All right.
What guy, Ms. Edmondson, second one?
Uh, yes.
Yeah.
I said it was six seventy, whatever. After what's current, I'm interested.
All right, let's move on to number two, Ms. Edmondson. Ms. Edmondson?
Yes, sir.
Go to the second one, please.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, ma'am.
You close the meeting.
The next case before us for public hearing is case twenty-two S U P three zero two. The landowner is Dominic Lamonte, and the applicant is Aaron Reed Lamonte. The tax map ninety-three parcel twelve is about four acres in this parcel, and it's located at eighteen sixty-seven Mulberry Grove Road, Buckingham, in the Maysville Magisterial District. It's currently zoned A one, and the request before you, as introduced last month, is to obtain a special use permit for the purpose of operating an Airbnb bed and breakfast with six dry campsites. The applicant is here with us, and I believe the landowner, and we do have two individuals signed up for the public hearing, Mr. Vice Chairman.
Thank you. We open the public hearing now, is what you call the name of the speaker?
David Ball, District Three.
Good evening, David Ball, District Three. Good to see you again. So, I talked about this last month at the planning commission, and looking at this again, um, this is a four acre lot, and they want an Airbnb with campsites. That's kind of a lot of campsites for Airbnb. And I want to point out, we have James River State Park, we have Appomattox, Buckey Dam, State Forest, all of which have adequate campsites for anybody who wants to come here. And you're right there in the midst of recreational activity. This is going to be just down the road from one of the local churches. There's some agriculture around there, and I wonder, on such a small lot, why you...
It's actually on four acres, not one acre.
No, I know it's, I said it was on four acres. But if you look at a house, just a house for the Airbnb with a driveway, septic fields, distance for your wells and everything, you're going to have about an acre of that taken up, and then you're going to have your setback distances around the property. So it doesn't make a lot of sense. I mean, it goes to the same fact I told planning commission, this basically, you're going to have ten, twenty, thirty, a hundred, four hundred Airbnbs spread around the county, they're not going to be generating revenue for the county, they're a tax write-off. Basically, that's what they are. Because everything that goes with the Airbnb is for tax write-off purposes. So that's not revenue for the county.
Revenue because you get lodging tax from Airbnb.
Right. Yeah, but you got an Airbnb, there's no guarantee that you're going to have people coming there. When people come to look at an area, they look for what's available, they're going to look at the big, you know, sites like the state parks, the state forests, the things that offer. You've got Cumberland State Forest just across the, the line, so there's a lot of recreation that's already here. And I, I think these are, in such a small lot, to have so many people dry camping without adequate facilities, think about it. How many people you want to camp at next to your house?
So, I camp next to my house, so. I mean, how many, how many acres you need for four, for six dry campsites? You ever been to a campground?
Yeah, I have.
Thank you, Tammy. Next, Jennifer?
Nelson Bailey, District Five.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Yes, sir.
Uh, and neighbors, for the privilege to speak. This Mulberry Grove is off of Howardsville, and it goes to fifty-six. Got three houses on the right, one down the road, there's another house, dirt road, you go to a church on the right, and a radio tower. Radio people couldn't get their tower light on for a long time, but that's another issue. These Airbnbs, who knows what they are? Has anybody ever stayed at one?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Uh... Well, okay, I got the floor.
You do, that's it. Go ahead, sir.
How about safety features on these Airbnbs? Do they have to have a sprinkler system? Do they have to have a first aid kit? Do they have to have a fire extinguisher? Do we have to look at it more closely? Now, this one, the first house is an Airbnb, this is the applicant's house that wants to be an Airbnb, and the third one is an Airbnb, right there, one, two, three. Boom. How about, I see in the planning that you have wetlands, and it says FEMA. Where's the map that shows that piece of property FEMA? And also wetlands comes under DEQ. Where's the DEQ map? Why don't we have paperwork? When it's required, you got a checkoff box. Why isn't there paperwork there? It's not like, oh, thank you.
Thank you, sir. That's all, Jennifer.
That's all.
Close the public hearing. Boy, what is your pledge after public hearing?
I make a motion that we pass it.
Get a second? Make a motion and second that we will pass this. All in favor? All right, thank you. What does the vote, that's a six? Hold the vote on it.
Bye.
Bye. All right, let's move to the next one, Ms. Edmondson.
Yes, sir, the next case for public hearing is twenty-two S U P three zero three. Landowners and applicants are Roy and Janice Turner. Tax maps, there are a few of them, four, tax map thirty-four, parcel thirty-four, it's a little over nine acres. Tax map thirty-four, parcel thirty-three with seventy acres. Tax map thirty-four, parcel thirty-four, lot A with ten acres. Tax map thirty-four, parcel thirty-four, lot B with seven point two acres. These are all located at four twenty-nine Maple Top Lane, Buckingham, in the James River Magisterial District. It's currently zoned A one, and the applicant wishes to obtain a special use permit for the purpose of operating Airbnb bed and breakfast campsites and event centers, events to include but not limited to weddings, reunions, festivals, concerts, crafting arts, celebrations of life with up to fifteen hundred attendees. We do have six people signed up for the public hearing, and the owners and applicants are here with us this evening as well.
Thank you, Ms. Edmondson. At this time, you open the public hearing. Who was the first one to speak?
Chiva Abate, District Five.
Thank you.
Sir.
I'm Chiva Abate from District Five. Harry Bryant is my supervisor. I, I want to thank the Turners, Roy and Janice, for a detailed application. Even read your handwritten comments. So, I, I see the intent is a good one, and to be honest with you, as a Yogaville administrator, we sometimes don't have space even for people who come to Yogaville, both rental and places to live. So, we would be interested possibly in referring people to this campsite or the Airbnb, because people are always looking for space to come. Now, we're slowly reopening, but when we get going, again, we want to take care of the people that are coming for our instruction and training. So, I, I'm also very aware of Ms. Bertoud's many good questions about the impact of possibly so many people on the roads, on the neighbors, and the people across the street from the Turners and so on. But the person that's going to come after me to speak is familiar with that land and understands that the way it's laid out allows for some music and sound, but it doesn't necessarily impact everyone. And I don't have the data on this, but it's a good question, and it's an issue that Mr. Matthews brought up, how can we accommodate our neighbors as good neighbors? So I want to approach it that way. I want Yogaville to be a good neighbor to the Turners. I want to thank them for doing an official process, because I'm aware of other BnBs that operate that have not gone through the permit process, and other people who have built venues out our way, who have had concerts without any, I don't know whether they've been permitted or not. So for, to have this come forward through the official process, I want to acknowledge that and say if there's a way we can find to see this as neighbors treating good neighbors and giving room for this, and maybe communicating when there's a larger event to all the neighbors in a way, that would be good. And I'm hoping we can come to some way that the Turners can have their facilities and the neighbors can be considered for the questions that they do have. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you, sir.
Ernie Moore, District Five.
Thank you, supervisors. I'm Ernie Chiva Moore, District Five. Harry Bryant's my supervisor. Beacon support of the special use permit for the Turners' application. I've known the Turners for forty years. I've been in Buckingham and came here to build Yogaville all those years ago. We were fortunate to have a lot of the county administrators work with us to build our facility out there. Turners were always good neighbors, as were the Branches, the Gunthers, the Raglins. I want to thank all of them for putting up with us, I guess you would say. We certainly, I've never heard any complaints from Roy or Janice, though I'm sure they had some. I just want them to have the same opportunity to follow the process that the county offers and be considered for their application, just the way they presented it. We want to open up, we're starting to open up more now after COVID, and we're, we too want to have some events. So, thank the board for considering my comments.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Next.
David Ball, District Three.
David Ball, District Three. I can tell by the look on your face, you probably think you know what I'm going to say, but I bet you don't. Actually, this one has an area that it actually services the people there, and from what you've heard already, it's something that does meet a need in that particular area where maybe general sites don't. There's enough land there for the proposed improvements and for what they propose to do, which makes sense. You need adequate space, you need adequate facilities, and it seems that this is a better planned project than most that have come forward, so I think it's a good deal. Surprised?
So glad.
Praise the Lord for you. Praise the Lord for you.
I'm so glad to get you a stamp of a blue.
Nelson Bailey, District Five.
Again, in District Five, Mr. Bryant, my superintendent. I live on the road, I'm a neighbor. I heard fifteen hundred vehicles. I don't know if I'm right or wrong, but I heard an enormous amount of vehicles. The only access is either on, uh, off of twenty or off of fifty-six, and it will be divided between Yogaville and my road. Okay, again, FEMA checked. Go down to the field that's just been harvested, and you'll see where the wetlands are. It's a common site in the county. The tractors don't plant crops because they get stuck there. And you can look at the field in front of Mr. Turner's house, and you will see where the crop doesn't grow. So it's a wetland. Da-da, wetland. Da-da, wetland. FEMA says, no wetland. Google Earth shows wetland. Field and stream. You are wildlife field and stream. Okay, anyway, we'll work that issue later. How about dry camping? And the Boy Scouts...
We'll give him five.
The Boy Scouts, we learned dry camping was you dig a hole. Well, you're going to put your stuff in a hole that's in the wetland, in the floodplain. I rode the two flood... I rode the two floods out on the James River in Richmond on a houseboat that I owned, both of them. Pictures in the paper, me putting the flag up. I know what wetland and flood lands are, flood plain. Again, buggy top Airbnb. Trankler system, fire extinguisher, first aid kit. If they have an enormous event, are there going to be police there? Is there going to be a security guard? Guns on the property, it's going to be allowed? Are they going to have ski doos in the river? If so, are they going to be registered? Are they going to have mopeds running up to Glenmore? If so, are they going to be registered? I don't see it as a win. I understand the business behind it, but it just doesn't make sense to have that kind of traffic. And we already have five event centers that have already been approved on twenty, Axtell Road, and a bunch more. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next, anybody else speaking?
Heidi.
Heidi Bear Two, District Five.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Hello again. My name is Heidi Divya Bear Two and I live in District Five. I asked the county to press pause on event site applications and dry camping until some important questions are ironed out. To be clear, I say yes, of course, to encourage local businesses, but let's also get it right. Thanks to a neighbor who follows your meetings regularly, I heard about this public hearing. But there's no signage out on the road. Signage is required twenty-one days prior to the hearing, true. And, but there's no signs by the road to let us know and that would have been the only way for us to know. I am very concerned for our quiet community in the northwest corner of Buckingham. The Turners have applied for a fifteen hundred people capacity center, dry camping sites for twenty-four trailers and a B and B in an A-one zone. We want to be good neighbors, but find this process challenging. Good government can help to oversee and arbitrate the sustainable usage of our Commonwealth. This S U P application brings up more questions to us. Why is the application bundled? I know that that's part of the S U P application, but why is it bundled? Why not separate the applications for the B and B from the event site from the dry camping? That would help with understanding the different issues that each one of those situations present. The roads in this area simply cannot support these numbers. They are narrow, unmarked, winding, have blind corners and minimal to no shoulders. We've heard about that tonight. We are in a peninsula with one way in and one way out and far from the state roads. What conditions and what number of attendees trigger requirements for V dot traffic impact statements, environmental impact and waste plans? That wasn't apparent to me. How did the two separate S U P applicants for tonight's meeting arrive at the number of fifteen hundred people capacity? I couldn't figure that out. Whoa, is that me doing that?
Pull the light torch.
Okay, sorry. All right. Limita, that's much better. Limitations on the frequency of events are not indicated. The Brewmaster S U P has a limit of four times per year for large events, two thousand people. And they, four, four times a year. And they're off of a state highway. There's no info in the A-one zoning code, though, though it does say above three hundred people, the sheriff must be notified. So one such event, fifteen hundred people per year, would, would be a burden on our neighborhood. We are all on well water with limited capacities and this is worrisome. Why is there no site map for the event center or camping area?
Thank you, ma'am.
Oh, really?
Yes, ma'am.
How'd that happen?
Three minutes is up.
Okay, well, you see, there are important questions.
Yes, ma'am, thank you.
To be asked.
Yes, ma'am, thank you.
Please press pause.
Ken DeHahnemann, District Five. Hello, Ken DeHahnemann, Five. I really appreciate the Turners and how they've tried so much to make things clear to us and met with us. And I definitely support development that promotes tourism and protects our environment. So I'm really in favor of seeing something like their project go forward. Although, I have read the application and I have several concerns about it. The first one, which Ms. Bertou mentioned, was the requirement for the sign postings three weeks in advance. I have not seen any signs in the V dot right away. Is that correct? Are there signs up? Okay, thank you. And second, I truly worry about our safety on the roads. We have narrow, unmarked, winding roads. The two access roads would be Montio and Woodland Church. Montio contains a winding hillside passing through timberland as it approaches the intersection with Woodland Church. I've had many close calls driving on it in the daylight and in the dark. I know several wrecks that have happened there. Woodland Church Road passes through the Yogaville community where pedestrians walk on the road daily and where wildlife is constantly seen crossing the road and sadly often hit and killed on it. The traffic impact form in the application only mentions traffic for the Airbnb, omitting mention of the campsites and the event center for up to fifteen hundred people. I ask that you delay this hearing until the application is complete. Thank you.
Anybody else?
That's all we have.
At this time, we close the public hearing. Thank all the citizens for their comments. And I've been knowing the Turners for some time and I, I got confidence they could do the right thing and run the business right. And I'm going to support this special use permit. What is the pledge of the board?
I've got some questions.
Got some questions, okay.
Mr. or Ms. Turner, either one of you, if you could.
Mr. Turner, would you come to the podium with one or both? Would you come to the podium, please, Ms. Turner?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Doing well, sir.
All right. We had, we did have two other S U Ps over the last two years that were event type S U Ps. One up on Route twenty-four, the Brewmaster property, which I think someone has already referred to. And the other one was a, a Mr. and Ms. Henshaw that had an Airbnb and a event or wedding type venue that they wanted to do. And we limited their, their sites to a certain number of people. What was the Brewmaster site, Ms. Emerson?
Two thousand.
Yes, it's two thousand, but how many?
For major events. And then the, the events typically over three hundred require working with Fire E M S and the sheriff's office, but his number was decreased to two hundred, Mr. Bertou.
And that could occur how many times a year?
For the events from two oh one to two thousand attendees, four times a year.
Four times a year. I'm just, just curious. How, how many times do you think you would have fifteen hundred people at your, at your site? Do you envision that happening?
All right, maybe once, twice, possibly. But you know, it's not, it's not something that we have, you know, done, you know, a survey or anything on. It's just a number.
Yes, sir.
That we're.
Let me ask you a question. Would you be willing to, to work that back, walk that back a little bit as far as the number? And if you did have a, a situation where you needed to do that, you could come back to the county to let us know that that was going to happen and we would probably approve that. You know, instead of saying, we're just going to turn this thing loose. You can have fifteen hundred people anytime that you want to do it. I think, I just think that would be a better way to try to address your needs, but also the concerns of some of the citizens that are in your district. That, that's just my opinion. You, you do what, ask it for whatever way you want to ask it. But I'm just thinking to show, if you don't think you're going to need it for fifteen hundred people, maybe once a year or whatever it may be, I would have a hard time approving it if you said, well, I want to do this and I want to be able to do it three hundred sixty-five days a year for fifteen hundred people. I mean, I, I'd have a hard time dealing with that myself.
Certainly wouldn't be the case, but yes. We could, you know, what, what number would you be comfortable with?
Could you deal with a thousand?
Well.
That's fair.
That's better. But I'm just thinking if we worded it in a manner where they could, if they wanted to approach the board, if they did have an event that they needed it for fifteen hundred people. But what would be the maximum number of times a year that you'd need to, you need to have this? I mean, just curious, do you have, have you thought about that?
I have, I have not. But if, if fours is a usable number for someone else?
Well, I would say, I would say, I would be willing to say six or so, if that's suitable to you. But.
Only thing, I see, I don't want to put a limitation on me. He got something coming in, we got to go for the board, take two, three months to get in the time and expire on it. I think we put, you know, tying his, tying his hands too tight.
You'd have to do another S U P to get the number changed. I mean, you can't just change because you want to.
I just don't want to see it tie his hands so he can't, you know, operate.
Have you got a thought on this, Ms. Emerson, on how you would address this issue? Fifteen hundred's a low number.
The Turners would be able to hold an event three hundred, less than three hundred, without notifying the sheriff's office. The, I believe the event you're talking about or anything three oh, you know, three hundred to fifteen hundred.
Fifteen hundred, yes.
Is that what?
That's right.
They're asking the Turners if they would.
You're talking about involving not just the emergency services, but the sheriff's department for, you know, public safety and the state police, traffic control. You know, when you're talking about fifteen hundred people, that's a lot of people. I mean, and, I mean, I, I don't go through your district a whole lot, especially where you live at. I'd probably love to go up there and see it sometime. But, and see what you're doing. But I just know how it is, how rural it is in my district and the amount of traffic that fifteen hundred people may, may cause on a certain road in not knowing your situation or where you live at. But, you know, that may, that may cause some concern, you know, with our law enforcement and EMS providers, you know, throughout the county. So I'd, I'd like to protect you and the people that are going to your venue as much as I do the citizens that are next to you. And, and you've had a lot of good people speaking in your behalf and they don't have a problem with it. But I, I just, it makes me nervous when we start talking in thousands of people instead of a couple hundred people in a situation like that.
Can I ask, Bro, how do you feel about it since he is our, our representative?
Yes, sir.
I, I think it, there's not going to be fifteen hundred people coming all in our house time. It's going to be over a period of days for them coming in and going out. So it's, I don't think it's going to crowd the roads all that much. It grows a, a pretty decent roads. And as far as I'm concerned, that I think it, just leave it like it is, fifteen hundred.
Okay, I, I support that, you know. Huh?
Hey, most likely, it won't be one person to a car.
That's fifteen hundred people, not cars.
Thirty mile an hour speed limit right there on that road, Montio. They're all doing forty-five. I see it every day. Almost get hit going through the.
That's right, the speed limit is fifty-five every year. And I've seen a runner sixty-five also, so.
Talk to the sheriff. Pardon, pardon me. What do, what do you want to talk about?
I didn't understand what she was saying. Look, I live on six fifty-nine, right from my seminar. Sometimes much as three thousand people go by. I've never heard of an accident. That's, that's six fifty-nine. Yes, sir.
Can we put the same? I like to play ball with everybody on the same playing field. What did we do with the other group? It was two thousand people, four times a year. Roy and them think they're not going to exceed that. So I say up to fifteen hundred people, four times a year. And if it's over three hundred, they notify the sheriff's department and EMS.
That's right.
And we go with it.
And you go with that?
That's what I saw.
Are you, are you good with that, Mr. Turner?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Let's play, I just like for everybody to go by the same rules. It's just.
Have you closed the public hearing yet?
Uh, no, sir.
Okay, I just wondered if he could make that motion.
No, no.
You got to wait till you.
Wait just a minute.
You got to wait till they close the public hearing.
Anybody that's got more questions for Mr. Turner? Anybody good with fifteen hundred, let it stay like it is? I'm good with it all. I close the public hearing. Then Mr. Davis.
Thank you, Ms. Turner.
Davis, go ahead.
I make a motion that we approve this and with the stipulations of that up to fifteen hundred people four, four times a year and over three hundred, they notify the sheriff and fire and EMS.
Hit your motion button.
Hit your motion button, Mr. Davis. Hit your motion button.
Hit the motion. Second.
It been motion and second, and we approve this for special use permit as presented. Are there any questions? All in favor? Thank you. Ms. Emerson, we can move on to A O.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
The next case for introduction is case twenty-two S U P three zero five. The landowner is Jonas Fisher and the applicant is Jonathan King. The property up for application for request this evening is tax map ninety-five parcel thirty-nine lot A and it is located near ten thirty-nine Banton Shop Road. It's an A-one district. The applicant, Mr. King, this evening wishes to obtain a special use permit for the purpose of operating a private school, one-room schoolhouse. The applicant is asking the board of supervisors to hold a public hearing for this request. This case was introduced to the Planning Commission April twenty-fifth and a public hearing was held June twenty-seventh. The Planning Commission voted to pass this to the board of supervisors with a recommendation of approval. Would it be the wish of the board of supervisors to hold a public hearing for this request on August eighth, twenty twenty-two at six P M?
What is your pledge, a boy, members?
Okay.
It been motion, we, motion and second when we hold a public hearing with this at the next board meeting? Be.
August eighth.
August eighth, thank you. All in favor? Thank you, Ms. Emerson.
The next case for introduction is twenty-two S U P three zero six. Landowner and applicants are Lawrence and Anne Marie Prinsloo at seven eighty-one Brandsford Road, Arbonia. Tax map forty-one parcel eleven. This property is in the Marshall Magisterial District. It's zone day one. The applicant wishes to obtain a special use permit for the purpose of operating an Airbnb bed and breakfast campsite and event center, events to include but not limited to weddings, reunions, business functions with up to fifteen hundred attendees. The applicants are asking the board of supervisors to hold a public hearing for this request. This case was introduced to the Planning Commission on April twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-two, and a public hearing was held June twenty-seventh. Planning Commission voted to pass this to the board of supervisors with a recommendation of approval. Would it be the wish of the board to hold a public hearing on August eighth at six P M?
For move.
Motion and second, we hold a public hearing at next board meeting. Are there any questions? All in favor? Thank you, Ms. Emerson.
Yes, sir. The next case is twenty-two Z M A three zero seven. The landowners are Elam, Emma, Eli, and Jacob Stoltzvis at two five seven six six North James Madison Highway, New Canton. The applicant is Piedmont Companies. The property would be tax map sixty-nine forty-nine, which contains ninety-six acres. The request from Piedmont Companies is to purchase two acres from the Stoltzvis landowners. So only the two acres that would be purchased, I do not have a plat for reference as of yet, would be zoned B one, should that, that request move forward. The current zoning district is A one and the request is a zoning map amendment. Piedmont Companies is requesting rezoning from A one to B one on that two acre portion for the purpose of building and operating a family Dollar Tree. The applicant is asking the board of supervisors to hold a public hearing for this request. This case was introduced to the Planning Commission April twenty-fifth, public hearing held June twenty-seventh, and the Planning Commission voted to pass this to the board. and the planning commission voted to pass this to the board supervisors with a recommendation of approval. Would it be the wishes of the board supervisors to hold a public hearing on August eighth at your next meeting at six P M?
Can I, can I make a motion, uh, make a statement here before we do that? Um, this parcel is being uh divided into three uh parcels and is that what, two parcels?
Two. The ninety-six, ninety-seven acre parcel, it would be um, the residue would be the ninety-four-ish because the um, contract would be to purchase two acres from the Stoltzvis's by Piedmont Companies.
Yeah, but the Piedmont Company hadn't, they haven't.
They've not presented a final contract.
They haven't obtained the property yet, so.
Correct.
You really, you were putting the cart before the horse. If we approve this or move it on for a public hearing, I think the contract needs to be taken care of as far as the sale of the piece of property. And once that happens, then he can come back for his public hearing instead of pushing this on forward without knowing what's gonna happen with that piece of property.
Plus it, plus this is the one I was talking about earlier, the six hundred and sixty feet that they're gonna have to get in between each other. Or the two of them gonna have to get one driveway.
When is the closing on this piece of property supposed to happen?
Unless you got distance, you got dist- you know, injected distance.
When, when is it supposed to happen, the closing?
Oh, this makes a difference. I guess that makes sense.
Well, you don't know what exactly, the exact mark of it, two acres. You just know it's two acres.
Got a plat, a certified plat?
That's what he's talking about.
Not survey?
Preliminary plat. I'm the surveyor.
I don't think that's the right way to go with trying to prove something that you don't, hadn't been purchased yet. I mean, I'm just saying. I mean, I, we didn't make that. That's how who does it all the time.
I can see, I can see what you're saying because nobody wanna buy, and they're not gonna get approved, yeah. They can't get it approved. That makes sense to me.
What is the distance from the goal?
I don't know, but they had it on paperwork that from the uh property line of the uh health center to where they put their driveways, a hundred sixty-nine feet, but um, that still doesn't tell you how far it is from the health center's driveway to their driveway. It'd have to be another, what? Well, they need a road distance to see how much uh room we got. It's gotta be six hundred and sixty feet apart.
But that's it, well, you can, it's two or three options you can do, but how, 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 how do you know which one you're gonna do to find out where it's gonna be at, you know?
I mean, that's a, that's something we gotta get straight, too. Is the six hundred and sixty feet or? Well, I'm pretty sure you can't get people just to turn left only. Or right, 'cause that won't work right there.
A two piece of property on one driveway.
Well, that's what they'd have to do.
Yeah.
They'd have to agree to that and they hadn't done it yet, I don't think.
I think the plan, the planning commission.
You don't have any idea how much footage it is on the highway, do you? From one end of your property to the other, on the road? And your driveway, ouch. See, it's gotta be six hundred and sixty between the health center, then the uh Dollar Tree, and there's another six hundred between Dollar Tree and your driveway. You have to go a long ways, old buddy. You got enough distance to go that way, though, is what I'm saying. You do?
Yeah.
Okay. That's, that's just something that's gotta be figured out. I'm just trying to help you, um. Well, when you get ready to put your driveway in, put it out apart, it'd be on yours, eh? Let you do yours first.
Okay.
Could we get a recommendation from the planning, uh, director, uh coordinator, Ms. Emerson, on what, what she feels like should transpire here moving forward before we make a motion and?
You have a, a drawing, so we do not have a preliminary plat. You could um adopt it or you can move forward if at least there was a preliminary plat, which would give you a concept of um where the new plat would be or the new parcel for the two acres would be located.
Here's my thing, Ms. Emerson, if you can mind. I talked to all the adjacent landowners this morning. I didn't have an exact place where it's gonna go. Not going up against anybody's house. It's gonna be on the health center side. Proposed it.
Okay.
But if we move it somewhere else on the property, then it's gonna move.
Yeah, I like it where it is, too.
The scale on this map here, and it's one inch is twelve feet.
But is it gonna fall within the guidelines of the six hundred and sixty feet? Is that what it's gonna do?
This is the health center entrance, and this is the proposed driveway. Health center right there, and it's going, that's the property line. But I don't know if this one inch, this is complete in a box or. Right. So.
What, what, what you wanna do? What's your, it's in your district, what you wanna do?
I wa- I would like to. Six hundred and sixty feet, that's V dot. We can't change V dot.
Yeah, alright. And I've talked to them, but, but it's about, they know about it now, so hopefully in between now and a public hearing, you have the information back from them.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, he said he could cut it back to four hundred feet, but he said he could cut it back to four hundred feet. But I've talked to the, uh, when he just left, and he didn't, he said no. That it. Yeah, that's, that's only if you go and turn one way. You can't turn the other way. You can't go out and turn this way and this way. You can only turn one way. I don't think you can set it up down there. That'd be hard to do. No, ain't nobody gonna fuck. I wouldn't, I mean.
So what, what, what is the pledge of the board?
Well, we can move it on and then hopefully get all this information by the next time we come back.
And then schedule a public hearing. Motion on the floor to set a public hearing. Can we get a sucker?
Wait, but my, my computer didn't die today. Wait.
Yours, too? What you gonna do is hear, it'll be a public hearing, it won't be no. Moving on to public hearing. Could we vote by hand then? You mentioned to vote by hand, there's something locked up.
Try it now.
Mine shut all the way down, will you?
Mine shut down, too.
Um.
Mine's back up now.
You can tell me, and I can do it from here.
Yes, put a yes on mine. We just move it on to the next, to the public hearing. I know the V dot has the information. I've talked to him all about it, so.
We've been sucking about Davidson, I mean, it been motion by Davidson, sucking by Bryant.
Yeah.
So we can roll on it, right? All in favor?
Is yours working?
Yeah, mine working now.
No, no, it's not.
You ain't voted yet. There you go.
There you go. Okay, you're good.
Alright, we moved on to public hearing, Ms. Emerson.
The next case for introduction is twenty-two Z T A S U P three zero nine. The landowner is James Madison Highway LLC. And the applicant is Aaron Revere. This property is um tax map one twenty-five parcel five lot five. It's just under an acre and it's located at Buckingham Center Drive in the Curdsville District. It's currently zoned B one, and the request before you is to add a zoning text amendment to a list of special uses in a B one zoning district for L P and natural gas storage and distribution, and apply for a special use permit for this purpose. The applicant is asking the board of supervisors to hold a public hearing. Uh, this case was introduced to the planning commission April twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-two, and a public hearing was held on June twenty-seventh, and the planning commission voted to pass this to the board with a recommendation of approval. Would it be the wishes of the board of supervisors to hold a public hearing for this request at your next meeting, August eighth, six P M?
Pledge of the board.
So move. I make a motion.
Motion by supervisor Matthew, second by supervisor Davis, that we're gonna move on to public hearing for the next board meeting. All in favor? Ms. Emerson?
The next case is twenty-two S U P three ten. The landowner is Shaw G. LLC with Brian Shaw as the manager.
Yeah, put my voting, I ain't got nothing on it.
I'm sorry, he said Ms. Emerson.
Yeah, yeah, sorry. It don't matter, whatever worked there.
Go ahead, Ms. Emerson. Yeah, see if you can get me going. Oh, look, I'm back now.
Once again, that case is twenty-two S U P three ten for introduction. Shaw G. LLC, Brian Shaw is the manager, is the landowner, and the applicant is Brian Shaw. His property is located at tax map one thirty-two parcel four. It has just two point nine one acres, and it's located at twenty-six twenty-six West James Anderson Highway. It is in the James River Magisterial District. It's currently zoned A one. The applicant wishes to obtain a special use permit for the purpose of operating a convenience general store. Um, this location building served as a grandfather general store in the past, but is not operated in a time period greater than two years. Thus, it has lost its grandfather status. The applicant is asking the board of supervisors to hold a public hearing. And this case was introduced April twenty-fifth, and a public hearing was held June twenty-seventh with the planning commission. And the planning commission does pass this to you, the board of supervisors, with a recommendation of approval. Would it be the wishes of the board of supervisors to hold a public hearing for this request, August eighth, six P M at your next meeting?
What's your pledge of the board? You're gonna second? Motion by Davis, supervisor Davis, second by supervisor Matthew, that we hold this public hearing for the special use permit on the next, in the August meeting. All in favor? Alright, Ms. Emerson?
I voted this time.
Thank you.
Oh, yeah, done that time.
And the final case I have for you this evening is the introduction of case twenty-two S U P three eleven. The landowners are Elam, Emma, Jacob, and Eli Stoltzvis at two five seven seven, two five seven, excuse me, six six North James Madison Highway in New Canton. The applicant is Elam Stoltzvis, and this property is tax map sixty-nine parcel forty-nine. It is located in the Marshall Magisterial District. The applicant wishes to obtain a special use permit for the purpose of operating an agricultural-based business for feed and supplies. The applicant is asking the board of supervisors to hold a public hearing for this request. And this case was introduced to the planning commission on April twenty-fifth, and a public hearing held June twenty-seventh, and the planning commission passes this to you, uh, the board of supervisors with a recommendation of approval. Would it be the wishes of the board of supervisors to hold a public hearing at your next scheduled meeting on August eighth at six P M?
This would be the above six hundred and sixty-foot drive.
Okay.
You have to work on, but yeah, you can pass it till we get.
Right, okay.
Next one if you want to.
Do believe Mr. Stoltzvis has been working with V dot in the last um couple of days to um obtain a new entrance, but he'll have those documents. He let me know before the meeting if you decide to hold a public hearing um prior. A date.
What's your pledge of the board?
So move.
Motion by supervisor Allen, second by supervisor Davis, that we will hold this public hearing on the August eighth meeting. Are there any questions? All in favor? Alright, thank you. Uh, let's move down to E M Department Agency reports and items of consideration. Now, uh, E M one, Mr. Carter?
Sir, Mr. Chairman, uh, as you've all heard plenty tonight, uh, on our agenda tonight is uh me coming to you guys tonight and asking for you giving me and the county attorney permission to work on a gold mining ordinance. Uh, I know several you have been approached by our citizens, as was said tonight, and community groups about this possibility. I'm asking you tonight if you would like me and the county attorney to work on this and bring you back a draft ordinance next month, and you can advertise for a pu- possible public hearing to follow.
What should we do so?
Second.
Motion by uh supervisor Bryant, second by supervisor Matthew, that we but uh asked the uh county administrator to come back with all the same, we need to call my attorney next month. All in favor? Alright, what's Carter?
Mr. McCarthy Gauls, is he not here?
I'm seeing.
Um, I, I can brief you on what he wanted to talk to you about tonight. Uh, I think a couple months ago, he spoke to you guys about uh the possibility of the county helping support in some uh water connections to the straight street building on Route twenty. Uh, Mr. Gauls told you a couple months ago, they've been approved a big grant from a I got a name of the funding agency, they've approved a grant to get, put it like in like bathrooms, toilets, a bunch of water lines, but you know, that grant does not cover the connection from our main line to the he's asking, you know, he was gonna ask tonight if there's any way that the county can help with those funds to. The number he was given, I think, Joe, you might forgot him wrong, was about nine thousand dollars it can cost to install those lines to the building. If he was here tonight, W, he would be asking you tonight if you want to refer to the finance committee and do something to try to get those funds.
Um. We promised him that we, if we get the figures, we would help him, and he would say the building could be used for in case of emergency. He had a hundred, a thousand square foot, and he'd be willing to do that in case we need it for the disaster or anything, area help. And so I think we should help, you know, uh, we promised him we would do it, you know, we would look at funding, you know, helping with the hookup fees.
Why don't you, why don't you refer to the uh, to the finance committee and then we maybe talk to C R C about possibly a grant situation for that or or help with that?
C R C for grants, and then also uh I've talked to Daniel Queen, our general property supervisor, and he's, he says, you know, a lot of stuff be done in-house, so it'll save that money and save costs, so. That's not something we would have to bid out and seek a profession.
So we can, I just pass it on to the finance committee to take it up?
I'll, I'll make a motion, I'll make a motion in that effect to uh pass it to the finance committee to take a look at, to see how we can help fund.
Motion by supervisor Matthew, second by supervisor Davis, that we will pass on to the finance committee to take a look at it. Are there any, uh, questions? All in favor? Alright, let's. Next is uh Mr. Davis, Mr. Cody Davis.
Um, so my name's Catherine Plom. I am a paramedic with the Department of Emergency Services, and I am here to speak um about a grant that we were recently awarded with the Firehouse Subs Public Safety Foundation. Um, so a couple of things. Um, one, we had an awesome committee that helped all of this happen. Uh, we could not have done this without Cody, um Chief Davis, Brett Gormis, um John Fury, who is a part-time employee and also a uh law enforcement officer with James River State Park, um and then Kevin from Finance. Um, so we have been awarded grant money for the purchase, uh, potential purchase of a U T V vehicle. Um, this is a um vehicle designed to facilitate remote rescue and evacuation of a patient in a known wilderness and outdoor recreation areas within the county and also areas yet unknown to us, um where we might need to um get a uh vehicle that can challenge, uh tackle challenging terrain to access a patient um in distress. Um, so we began this process in January, putting the pieces together for the grant. Um, we submitted our um application in April. Um, and this is uh something that we sourced three different quotes on as part of the process. We moved forward with a quote from Polaris Government Contracts for this U T V. U T V will be specked with a um rescue skid, so what that means is we will have an attendant seat for a E M tier paramedic to provide care. It comes with a Stokes basket to facilitate transport of a patient out, as well as seating for additional personnel to facilitate that rescue of the patient and equipment transport. Um, this county has proven that need several times, um even since Department of Emergency Services has taken over the most recent example. Services has taken over, the most recent example being the search that was facilitated last night. They had several private A. T. Vs and U. T. Vs out there, and this is a resource that would have absolutely served a, a higher purpose. Um, so, um, we have, um, been awarded a total of thirty-eight thousand, three-hundred-and-sixty-nine dollars and fifteen cents from the Firehouse Subs Public Safety Foundation. Um, of the six applications they received during this quarterly grant cycle, we were one of seventy that was funded. Um, this funding is to be released to us via, uh, M. O. U., um, and an account transfer. It has to be that way, um, in order to facilitate proper titling of the vehicle in the county's name. Um, the other option would be for Firehouse Subs to purchase, um, directly on our behalf, but they cannot do that with, um, a grant request that, um, requires a title. So, um, in order for them to release those funds to us, we need approval, um, for the Board, um, that we can appropriate those funds to purchase the equipment, um, for the quote that we have received. Um, and that's pretty much where we are at. Um, I would be happy to answer any questions, um, about the process, um, but that would be our request.
Thank you. Now, in the board, we have a question for this young lady. I got no problem supporting it, I think it's a good thing. Go get a motion to support this.
Make a motion to accept.
Motion by Supervisor Allen, second by Supervisor Bryant, that we will accept it. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Good job, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Appreciate you guys.
Kathy.
Huh?
Kathy's vote didn't go.
Um, E. M. Four, finance, consider engagement letter from audit and services for, uh, Robertson Pharma Cox's sensation.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman, uh, in your package tonight, you should have, uh, uh, a letter from Robert's Pharma Cox, you know, laying out their audit scope and their procedures that they're going to perform this upcoming fiscal year audit. Uh, we do this every year, it's one of those things, we have to agree allowing them to come in and audit our books before they can come in, so, uh, it's just a standard letter that's stating out what they're going to do to the, for the county and what procedures will be performed, so, uh, we just need you guys to approve this so they can perform their audit for the fiscal year twenty-twenty.
We need a motion to approve this.
I'm sorry, make a motion.
Motion by Supervisor Allen, second by Supervisor Bryant, that we will approve this. Uh, I've got any questions, all in favor? All right. Yeah, well, county, county attorney matters?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, I have three models I'd like to discuss with you tonight. The first is the addendum to the industrial park agreement. Uh, as you know, the Board approved the sale of the property, uh, at a previous meeting. Uh, it went to the Planning Commission, not for the contract, but there was some rezoning that's required in the introduction of the property, uh, of the, of the application to the commissioners, there was several, uh, discussions and exchange, in particular about the pool house and community building. Uh, the developer offered, uh, a bond maturity to ensure the construction and the completion of those facilities. The contract is actually with the Board and not with the Planning Commission, and it was a proffer, uh, the Planning Commission can't change that contract. So what, uh, taking that information, I prepared an addendum, which I understand has been circulated to you that incorporates the bond security into the contract. Developers reviewed this addendum, was in agreement. Um, so where we are tonight, uh, you can take action if you want to add that and authorize the county administrator to sign the addendum on behalf of the county, or if you want to wait till the Planning Commission acts and sends you something else. Pleasure, be happy to answer any questions on that topic.
Any questions for the attorney? County attorney? I want to pledge to the board.
We can just wait till the planning commission, their stamp of approval on, that's okay.
Actually, they don't get to approve it, but I'll, can I relate to them that you'll entertain it when it, if, uh, whatever comes from the Planning Commission?
It's consistent to the board.
The second item I want to talk about is the Dillon, uh, Medical Building. Uh, the, we haven't considered that for a little while. I had communication from Center Friday that indicates they are preparing the final closing papers. There were a couple of questions about title. Uh, actually, the title examiner had said that the road that goes in by it was not a public road, we got them straight on that. Then they had a question about, uh, rider reversion that the town of Dillon had reserved. Uh, they had missed a document that Dillon had already released that rider reversion. They've got all that information now, so should be coming to closing on that, uh, pretty quickly, so, uh, that's, that's some good news. The final thing I want to talk about is the, uh, hotel, uh, that is well underway. We haven't talked about it in quite a while, and some people think it's gone away. Uh, you know, with a project like that, it requires a substantial permitting, and one of the things they're working on right now is a permits with D. E. Q. for drainage. Uh, the property, uh, will have some drainage come off of it when it, uh, is paved and the buildings are constructed. We had, uh, probably several years ago, had agreed to give an easement down the site for connection of the, uh, water line and those types of things. They need a drainage easement, uh, and that's out of my wheelhouse as far as understanding it. Lynn Hill is the individual who's been working with, uh, the development, also with D. E. Q., and where we started, for what they asked for initially, we said, hey, that's too much. They pared it down, and it's before D. E. Q. to get approved now, but, uh, they will need an easement to accomplish that. The easement they're talking about, as you're standing on Wingo Road, looking at where the hotel is going, if you, you know that the solid waste collection site is to your left, there's a little bit of land in between where the hotel will go. It will join the hotel property and be maybe fifty or a hundred feet wide, almost a big portion of it already being in what we already said they can have. It, uh, has a water diffuser type event, so when the water comes off, it just diffuses the water and lets it run, uh, down across the, uh, rest of the landscape there. So if, if you think that easement is appropriate, I'd ask that you, uh, authorize the county administrator to, to sign that easement once D. E. Q. has approved and, and the appropriate language has been developed. If you want to wait till D. E. Q. acts, that's fine too, but I wanted to.
Make a motion.
We got a motion, a second, motion by Supervisor Allen, I'm sorry, motion by Supervisor Allen, second by Supervisor Matthew, that we approve this, go forward, all in favor? All right.
Those are the items I have, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Uh, county administrator report, Mr. Carter?
Just got a couple of paper. Couple of updates. Uh, the courthouse renovation project that you guys approved a couple of months ago, uh, we've been working on contract language with the county attorney and their attorney on getting that, uh, contract finalized so we can start the process. Uh, we just got that finalized maybe a week and a half ago, so we should be getting the final document for me to sign and move forward with that project, so in the upcoming weeks you will see, uh, some community meetings, uh, I think I put. Vice Chairman Chambers and Chairman Miles is on that committee, so we'll have some kickoff meetings with, uh, staff and the people in that area to get that project up and going. Also on project updates, uh, replenish the recycling program that you guys, okay for us to work with. Uh, we're still working on that contract. Uh, if you look at their agreement they have online, it's mainly done for, like, single organizations, not done for county, local government, so some of the things they have in there is not pertaining to us, some of the things we want to be in there is not in there, so we're working back and forth on them on getting some right documents so that we, you know, both sides are fine with their agreement once you sign it. That has not been completed yet, we hope to get that done pretty soon. Um, the second item I have on my, uh, list of things to get you with is the request for the community centers, an action item. Uh, I've received this from the Recreation Department, and I think I passed it out also to you guys before the meeting. There's a request to use the community center on July seventeenth, which is pretty soon, for firearm safety seminar. Uh, as you know, with the recent events in the world, uh, gun training is a big hot topic right now, so, uh, I think this Recreation Director, he did not want to approve this without the Board knowing about it, at least approving themselves, so, um, it's up to you guys, do you want to approve this gun training seminar, or? Uh, I told Todd that we do approve it either way, we have to be no live ammo there, there would have to just be a training thing just on how to use safety weapons.
Paying the fee?
Yes, they're paying the fee.
I'm good for it.
On the motion, we accept it.
For a second moment, rights.
Motion by Supervisor Bryant, second by Supervisor Matthew, that we will accept this, approve it. Are there any questions, all in favor?
Thank you, that concludes my report, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Uh, other board members, any board that got in the, in the thing? Now we need to go into executive session.
Going, are we going?
Yeah, we got to go into executive session.
You got this stuff to read, Danny.
You read it.
Go ahead.
Oh, go ahead.
There you go, read.
You want to read?
Oh, I make a motion that we go into closed session for the discussion of the award of a public contract involving the expenditures of public funds, including interviews and, um, bidders enough, offers and discussions of terms or scope of such contract where discussions in open session would adversely affect the bargaining part, position or negative strategy to the public body. So this is, uh, two-point-two dash three-seven-one-one dash A, point A, point thirty. So moved.
The motion by Supervisor Allen, and second by Supervisor Matthews, we're going into executive session in the code to be read. All in favor? So, okay.
All right.